Hey folks, unmute the microphone, please. Thank you.
We're ready. Jake, can you hear us now?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Dr. Will, do we have any acknowledgements?
No acknowledgements this time.
All right, thank you, sir. Additions to the agenda?
I would like to make a motion to move a study recorded and the portrait of a graduate presentation to add to our points of interest.
Any discussion? Well, Brian?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I, Jen?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye, sorry. Aye.
And Katie?
Aye.
All right, first and past me. All right, now entertain a motion for the approval of the March the thirteenth minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none. Brian?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I, Jen?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to public participation. Members of the Tallinn Board of Education welcome members of the public to share their thoughts and ideas at this time. When appropriate to do so, members of the board and administration may respond to comments during the points of information section. However, in consideration of those in attendance and in an effort to proceed in a timely manner, follow-up discussion may need to take place outside of this meeting session. If anybody in the room or online would like to speak, please start with your name and address. Raise your hand if you are online. Going ones. Nobody in the room, nobody online? Hearing none, I will close points of information. Dr. Will had told you that timing is intimidating. For garments.
We had three emails in the last two weeks, two emails in support of the budget, and one email on an athletic issue that is not in our purview.
Copy that. Thank you. Points of information. If anybody from the board wanted to speak?
Hello, Jim. Um, I, we, we had rounds at Birch Grove. We had rounds at Birch Grove and we went over Bridges Number Corner. So we got to view it in K one and two, but also pre-K. This year, which was, which was really great. It was phenomenal as always, as the instructional rounds always are. We really got to see, we did it backwards this year. So instead, a lot of times that we do rounds, we start at the lowest grade and move up. This time we went backwards. We started at second and went down. I did get very invested in the grade two one because it was teacher against students playing a game and they tried to make me leave before the end of the game and I needed to see who won. So thankfully, Mr. Swanson helped me out and I got to stay to see the teacher win. But these kids and their math. You can't believe it. I mean, they're doing, they're doing word problems and it's, it's really, it's really amazing what some of them can do. And I picked out a couple of kids that I think are, are math geniuses and I'd like to follow through their years. But just a lot of, you know, a lot of what we've seen in the instructional rounds going past, a lot of energy, a lot of fun. Bringing so many components into one lesson. The pre, seeing the pre-K was something new. I've never viewed a pre-K class before. And it was so funny that the teacher, Mrs. Merzek, she was like, okay, okay, we only, you know, they only have about so many minutes in them. I think, I don't think she realized they were the best behaved of, of any of the classes that we had seen. They were, they were excellent. And, you know, and again, they're using, you know, tangibles and, and putting them on charts, but then they're also reading the problems and, and they're giving the answers or playing off each other. The kids are doing teamwork. They're sharing with each other their processes and all the grades. It, it was, it was really, it was really great. I know you love it. So I'm sorry that you missed it. And, you know, we had, you know, we had some special education children that were mixed in and, you know, they were able to, to do things. We had, we saw a small group of kids doing math and, and processing it in a different way than maybe some of the class was, working with a para. So it just, it was, it was, it was really wonderful. And they really, everything that we, you know, were given to look for, they hit. You know, we were given great, you know, graphics of what the number corner looks at, looks like for each grade. So it was wonderful. It was a very, it was very informational. It was very fun. It was great to see kids being kids and also learning and having a really good time with it. So thanks so much to our staff and our administrators for, for putting that on. And then the other thing, I'm, I'm going to mention it when I talk about the, the PTO updates, but we attended the Harlem Wizard game that, um, we, yeah, threw last night. That was another great event. So many people sold out and so many of our staff there, you know, just making it so fun for the kids. So that was their personal time. I just wanted to say what a great event that was and thank them for taking more personal time out of their lives to be with our children.
I'd like to piggyback on what Jen said. I got to get other rounds. And it was fantastic. Again, if anybody has a chance to, I know we have two more. I know it's hard because it's a workday for, for all of us. So it was, the teachers were so welcoming. We actually went into a room that wasn't scheduled and some, some row and her kids, um, you know, walking into those, the youngest students' classrooms, you know, there's a lot of this and, but they were, they went right back to it and were really focused. And I appreciated the first grade class of Mrs. Youngs. They did the analog and the digital clocks, which I thought was really cool because, you know, some, some adults can't tell you on an analog clock. But it was, it was great. And like Jen said, we worked backwards. Now you can see the progression up and how, so it all connects the dots as they go from level to level. This time we worked our way backwards, but, you know, I carry the one and I, you know, do those kind of things and you hear these kids moving around the hundredth plus the eighty plus the twenty. And then, you know, this other group has a totally different way to arrive to two hundred and twenty. Then this group had a different way of arriving. And you can see how the mathematics are working versus the old school. Carry the one kind of thing, you know. So I was really appreciative. All the teachers were very welcoming. The students were very welcome because we, it's, it is easy for us to be a distraction coming into the classrooms. Especially for depending on which school you go to and which kids you know you are. It's, Mrs. Fobin was in my class, or Miss Galchow was in my class kind of thing, but
Mr. Swanson is the biggest distraction.
He really is. And he did give us grow cards. So we were able to give away, we had power of the grow cards. And that was really cool. It was just a fantastic morning. Wouldn't have wanted to spend it any other way. I really miss being a Birch Grove parent, going to Birch Grove every day. Such a fantastic school and fantastic staff. So a wonderful, wonderful day. So please pass on my thanks again to them, Dr. Will. They were amazing. And we put together a packed curriculum and Miss Webster put together a packed, or no, packed agenda, I should say. And then also I was lucky enough to go with some of our friends here to the Wizards game, which was, I think my kids actually thought it was going to be a real basketball game. So it was more exciting for me than it was. But Mr. Mitchell had the most fans in there. I don't know if you saw the Mr. Mitchell heads, you know, with all of his little baseball friends. Kids, I'm like, man, Mr. Mitchell, you're the most famous person there. But it was a great fundraiser. I, I mean, they must have crushed it because it was sold out. It was awesome. Mr. Slayton was spinning the, the ball on his fingers. So the kids really were pumped when they saw their educators and then they saw Ms. Belair like shoot on the wrong basket. And the, the teachers like really got into the goofiness of it and had a great, I, I think they looked like they had a great time. So, you know, it was fantastic, Dr. Will. I hope it voted well to the district and the T E A. Because like you said, people on their off buying button. Those, those stands were packed. And I couldn't get my kids out of there. I mean, it's cool living in high school too when you're in younger kids. So thank you for that, for the T E A, for putting on such a wonderful program. It was a pretty cool week for Tallinn schools.
And there was all kinds of people online looking for tickets because it was sold out.
Yeah, you know, just a key. And that was the thing that really got me. I mean, it was, it was amazing turning on that. But when we got home, my wife unfortunately couldn't make it. So when we got home, the first thing my daughter ran up to her and said was, my music teacher sang the National Anthem and my principal tried to shoot over the big guy, but he couldn't make the call. So it was not these basketball players or these, you know, incredible athletes that were showing up that she wanted to talk about. It was those teachers and those administrators that I touched on. She was so excited to see the cheer for it. So that it, it really was a testament to, you know, what our, what our staff is really doing out there. And poor Dr. Will, you know, I had to get my texts every couple of minutes. Man, he really can't shoot. But just to, you know, tag into what you two are saying, my, my appreciation, not only, you know, as a board member for, for everything I'm doing, but as a parent for just the, probably the joy that my daughter is still talking about it. So, thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, that was after Wizards game. Yeah, it was, it was wonderful. My, my family had a, we had a blast. You know, my, my son has Miss Williams and she, she, she's like, she's going to be the center. Today, this, I had a grand old time, a little good cause that I went to, yeah.
I had to download the Cotton Eye Joe song.
All right. Hearing none, health? Let's move on, I believe, to Senator Gordon out of No One. Welcome.
Thank you for having me. I wish I could have been at the Wizards game. I bought a ticket, but then my family decided to get sick. So I could not attend. So although I used to be a president of the Woodstock Education Foundation and we never did anything like basketball like that. So I'm going to have to tell the board members. So, but, but since I couldn't make it, I'm assuming you'll go, like, we'll do a one-on-one challenge. You know, basketball, uh,
You don't get tickets to that.
Back in the day, I was in the hoops challenge. I didn't want to put people to shame, so I thought maybe I thought I'd just let other people take the spot later on.
Your ability is appreciated.
Just for your information, that, that his family sickness is not why we have Senator Gordon so far back there.
So, I mean, thank you for coming tonight. Is there anything that's going on in the legislature you want to make us aware of? I, I have a question. I don't know if others have.
Well, there's no lack of stuff the legislature is trying to do. It's a short session, which means we're supposed to be done at once, day eight ends. By, by law. So, but doesn't stop us from trying to cram everything under the sun into this session, which is going to be very interesting to try to get it all done, including some issues where you may have heard the news about the insurance committee imploded and sat on forty to fifty bills and that's going to clog the system, trying to figure out what to do with the bills, which are some good bills that I've been advocating for. But there's a lot going on. Right now, the big, big item that we're, you know, dealing with, I'll, I'll move up here so people can see me, is what we do with the budget adjustment. That is a huge issue. It's dominating almost everything that's happening in the legislature. Last year, we approved a biennial budget, fifty, around fifty-two billion dollars. That's separate from the billions in bonding and a lot of money that is accounted for not on the budget, which is an interesting accounting that the state does. So this year, we are supposed to make adjustments. The governor has proposed his adjustments. Nearly everything he's proposed about education adjustments sank like a lead balloon in appropriations committee, which I serve on. And I would like to say rightly so, because I don't know, I don't agree with some of his cuts and readjustments and some of this stuff we already fought over in the budget. But the real issue we're trying to figure out is what do we do with all the spending requests? At last count, I'm told it's around nine hundred million of extra requests. And we're, we're supposed to stay within a spending cap, which was unanimously bipartisan approved to continue last year. And supposedly, without us doing anything this year, we're over the spending cap supposedly. By, I think a hundred million, although numbers are fluctuating around. As each time, every month, we get new tax revenue numbers that come in. So we're trying to figure that out. One of the things that's big that I've been advocating for is to continue the work that we've done, I think in a good way, for trying to support as much as we can public education. There was a big bill, Jeff Curry, he's the House Chair of Education, was promoting five zero zero three. That, the entire bill wasn't going to be able to get passed just because of budgetary constraints. But we did make a big effort in the budget to put more money into public education in various degrees. It comes up to around six hundred million different. When you add up all the different things that were done. That was huge. And also a big thing was any town that was going to get cuts because it was considered overfunded. Those cuts weren't going to happen. So some people were like, well, you're not getting ex, we're not getting extra money. But that was money that was going to be cut. And for some towns, a lot of money. Well, I know Tallinn was slated to get cut. But that was money we had to add back into the budget to prevent that from, from happening. And that, that was a big effort. This year, there's a number of efforts. There's one big bill. It's called five two one two. It's a very interesting bill. Also promoted by the Education Committee. It passed unanimously and seems to be favorable for a lot of folks on appropriations committee right now is to continue those investments, not backtrack. Continue and see what more we might be able to do. And also set the stage for what's going to be the negotiations next year when we have to wrestle another two-year budget with that. It's going to be interesting how that flies because there's a lot of pushback from the administration wanting to really cut back on certain things to refocus on some other items that we, last year, we just didn't fully fund because quite frankly, we had the ARPA money that we used. So right now, I think the sense is, is going to be some continued commitments to education. Won't be as big as we were able to do last year, just because we don't have as much money to play with. However, the state can't give us an accounting for how much ARPA money it has. Which is interesting. That was a bone of contention. And we're going to now get an accounting, we're told, by the end of this month. And also to find out what actually we have that is not designated. We're being told that all the money is going to be spent, but we don't know what that really means. So we might have opportunities to use some ARPA money for some one-time things that are in the budget. And then hopefully move some of those monies to other things to continue to build, like education and a few other things that we need to Medicaid rate sampling services. Actively working on a lot of those. So it'll be very interesting. One of the problems, because this is a short session, and it's a lot where wrestling is likely, no one's going to see a final budget to, within the last twenty-four hours. That's just how it operates. And then you get to pour through a massive document. Last time it was a nine-hundred-page document. We all got twenty-four hours notice, more or less, to pour through that. But right now, there seems to be a commitment bipartisan to do more for education and definitely not backtrack. So hopefully, ideally, I would love to see the crazy formula that you guys all have to wrestle with from the state about how you get money and how it gets all portioned out. It's a weird system, as you know, doesn't make any sense. That's a bigger lift. Don't know we're going to be able to do that in this session, but there's already talk about next year in a longer session, what more we might be able to do. Real to that. So right now, education is one of the top ones. But with that said, it's all being driven by what money we have. And there's also a fight over to go into the surpluses. Those surpluses are there for a reason, so that we don't have to come back and say we burnt through surpluses when the economy goes down at some point. And guess what? We're going to give you less money. So there's a big fight over that. And also, if we can pay down our debt, we actually have more interest, less interest payments. And in fact, the governor, and I applauded him in person for this last session, we were able to pay down a lot of billions of dollars in debt. That interest savings was plowed back into the budget because it was freed up money. That actually helped us fund more for public education, you know, for example. So if we can continue to pay that down and have less interest payments, it actually will literally free up money that we are allowed to spend for, I think, a better purpose. But this state still has tens of billions of dollars in debt and pension liability. So we have to, we're working on trying to pay that down. And then we can spend money differently. But that doesn't mean we're going to get rid of bonding. That's a whole separate thing, but that still, you know, causes us to pay interest. So there's a lot of dynamic right now that's going on and it's a bit of a fight between the administration and different parts of the legislature on what can or cannot be done with the spending caps. So stay tuned. But last but not least, there's also seems to be an understanding not to start coming back on non-education aid that goes to the towns. Since no one seems to like that, especially since it's an election year, no one wants to talk about cutting back on municipal aid. So there seems to be a commitment to try to not cut back on that at all and maintain it as much as we can and see what we can then do next budget, depending upon the economy, to see what more we can do as far as municipal aid, public education. So I don't serve on the Education Committee, but since public education is something I've always been interested in and support, I follow quite closely what the Education Committee does. And I'm on some of the education subcommittees on appropriation. So all of those bills have to come to us to be sorted through. And that's what's happening now. But by all means, make certain your, let your voices be heard. We're hearing, I'm hearing from, you know, literally thousands of people a week, because I have thirteen towns I represent. But the more you can let your legislators know, the better, because there's a lot of competing interests. And sometimes it's whoever yells the loudest gets the most attention.
So do you anticipate that ECS funding will stay pretty stable?
Right now, with the feeling is yes. I would love to see it go up. And I've been very interested in what we might be able to do. But that would mean that we really would have to get rid of the spending cap. And one of the fiscal guard rails that, you know, the fiscal guard rails, we can't touch, otherwise it'll mess up our bonding by law. And it's unclear if there's really enough appetite to do that, but there's a, there's disagreement between the House and the Senate and certain caucuses about what to do with the spending cap. The problem with that is if we break the spending cap and not think about what we're going to do in the rest of the years, we'll burn through surpluses. And we can do that. We can burn through these billions of dollars in surpluses in just a couple of years. And then you either raise taxes to maintain the funding, or you start cutting. And education is one of the ones that readily gets looked at because it's a big ticket item. So I'm hopeful that we don't go that road and that we can see what we can do to maintain what we're doing. I think there's some steps we can make to accelerate certain things, especially for fiscal year twenty-six. And then set the stage when we have to craft a two-year budget next year. But we have to get the buy-in from the governor because then he proposed something different. But there's enough of a majority, if I did the head counting right, on appropriations to really want to do that and continue the work that we did and not backtrack. So hopefully, we won't backtrack, but right now, the plan is not to at all.
I, so, um, so the, the, the short session is three months, basically, right?
Yeah.
So this is really, I mean, you've got a full-time job, which you're, you're holding that weight. And then as a state legislator, you've got, you've got to process two hundred and ninety or three hundred bills or whatever, once they get pared down in ninety days. So how do you, because there's so much we're able to look at and process, and that's, that's the burden of all state legislators, you know, it's very hard. So when that, you know, happens, you know, things that are popping up are these unfunded mandates, you know, here.
Yes.
And one of them, for instance, indoor air quality, right? That, that schools now have to have mandatory inspections and whatever, even if they have their own, you know, their own, you know, deadlines of doing that. Now there's more mandatory pieces to that, which have costs to districts. You know, and, and, you know, these material costs, these, these mandatory inspection costs. And that's an example of sort of a mandate that came, it's going to cost districts money. Is there any, any way of being able to manage these unfunded mandates from a process point of view so that there's more public hearings, more interaction before these mandates get rolled out? Because, you know, it's, it's not fair to you as a legislator when there's so much to process in so little time. And then the implementer bills come out and things get tucked in there. And then we end up with a lot of unfunded mandates, you know. How do you feel about that? Is there a way we can?
I don't like the funded mandates. I never did when I was a town official in my own town. I know I and others had submitted to really push for the task force to start looking at these unfunded mandates, especially for schools. And I know that's winding through its process. When you talk with the State Department of Education, which I've done many times, and ask them, what have they done with all the data they've collected from it? All I get is they just copy and paste the state statute. I said, thank you, but that's not my question. And so they don't really do it much. The problem with these unfunded mandates is, is that it's one thing to vote against a bill. And I voted against bills that have had unfunded mandates and even made amendments to say, this is an unfunded mandate. It makes no sense. If you want to make it a policy on the state, the state should pay for it. That's my feeling. The problem is, is that these things get put into bills that are really good on purpose. So that way the bill passes and then somebody, this unfunded mandate goes. So sometimes then you have to decide, do you vote against a really good bill? Or in the mid, you know, in the middle of the night, and that's really when a lot of stuff is finalized with fast and furious budget negotiations. If you really want to see a circus, then see us, you know, in the last twelve hours. Because we're going right up until midnight, literally. There's votes like a minute before midnight, just like that. There's so much put into the budget bill and then a separate implementer bill to implement the budget, that you don't see them all. And also you have to make a decision, do you vote against an entire budget for a few of the unfunded mandates? I didn't like some of the unfunded mandates in the budget. I voted for the budget because there were a number of good things in. I didn't want to vote against the work I and others were doing to try to help more money for public education. And there were a number of good things, otherwise I thought, for the district in the budget. But it, it's very difficult. You know, when those bills come out, the, the budget bill, I think, was like nine hundred pages. The implementer, I think, was several hundred. Then there's a bonding bill that was like three hundred. So it's very difficult. What I tried to do this year, and I couldn't put a bill in because we're limited in what bills we can put in a short session. We're only technically supposed to take up bills that deal with revenue, finance, bonding. So we can submit a bill, but committees just do anything. So I advocated with the government administration and elections committee, we shouldn't redo the process. Give us more time to look at these bills and staff the volume. Because the, the number of mistakes that get put into those big bills that we have to come back and do a technical revision is unfortunate. And we should have, I actually advocated for a table of contents that's more transparent, that really flags what are these extraneous things in the bills. Because unless you really read the wording and understand it, it's legalese and you wouldn't know what exactly it is. That's unfortunate, but the, that committee is not going to do that. So next year, we'll have an opportunity to try to bring some sense to the process. It was interesting because there were so many different things that people were catching in both parties, that they had no idea was in the budget and complaining about. That hopefully is a wake-up call that it's not a good way of doing it. The other is, there are things that come out, you know, that, you know, is it good, is it bad? But it's, you know, it could be when we're in session, we could be there like three in the morning. So what do I do? I wake you up and call you? Saying, you know, hey, can you get up and go on your computer and look at this? But then we get it and then the votes just happen, you know, like that. So sometimes you'll see us talking to slow the process down. So we actually have time with staff to figure it out. The, my understanding from what I've been able to gather from my staff research The, my understanding from what I've been able to gather from my staff research is the number of unfunded mandates that the Department of Education has is staggering. And they don't even have a tally. So I'm hopeful this task force will report back to us and people will realize just the stunning weight of it all. And then I think a vast majority of them are unneeded, already served their purpose, and we can just be eliminating them all. And I would love to be able to see that. I'd like to see if we could do that, if we could do that this session, but right now, they wanna wait to see what this group comes up with. But it's also pushing the agencies. Because it takes them time to go through and, and see what they have, and they don't want to. Because it burns up a lot of time, they have to backtrack, sometimes years. There's some of these unfunded mandates that, you know, are decades.
Yeah.
And we have no idea if it's even relevant. So that was one of my bills last year, and hopefully, we can really see some good information that will just stun enough people to say, "We just need to have like a bill that lists all of these things and say we're asking them." Or saying, "Hey, we think some of these aren't needed, should we modernize them?" You know, and then certainly ask, you know, people like you, "Hey, what do you think?" Because you're the ones that have to deal with it all.
That, that would be helpful, that's great.
It is. It's unfortunate, though, because once it gets in, it's tough to get it out. Because then the agencies hold on to it.
When is this report supposed to be finalized or submitted to the public or to you or?
Supposed to be submitted to the Committee of Cognizance, which likely will be the education committee and the appropriations. I mean, almost everything flows to appropriations anyway, but it has any money aspect to it. But just because it says it's supposed to come to us a certain time, it doesn't mean, we have bills right now that are saying, "Oh, by January first, we're, we're supposed to have like big reports from task force." That's never gonna happen. So a task force deadline is fiction, they never meet, they never meet them. So right now, one of the things I know myself and others are trying to sort through is, where are all the agencies? What, what they tell us is they don't have enough staffing and funding. And I tell them, "I don't know, I'm seeing your line item in your budget, you have no lack of capability to do it. You just actually have to do it." But i- it's very difficult to sometimes hold their feet to the fire. There's no enforcement mechanism when we say we want a report, that's the problem. Some of these committees will just say, "Okay, you're not able to do it, we'll give you another six months, give you another year." My feeling is that we're gonna set a realistic deadline, should adhere to it. So, and I can tell you, like in public health committee I serve on, we actually have been thinking about realistic deadlines for reports on certain things we really need to be making decisions on. So, you know, stay tuned, but some of that's also gonna be hashed out potentially in the budget adjustment bill about some of this stuff.
I know Town Manager Foley had sent a communication today, you probably haven't seen it yet. But when we get an opportunity, we might need your assistance in reviewing some birth scroll.
Yes, I, I saw, I didn't read the email yet. I can get thousands of emails a week.
This gave just a few hours, so I would expect you to.
You haven't read it in the thousands of emails a week?
Yeah. But just in act.
When we're in session, I have thirteen.
I'm just teasing you.
You should see the emails, we get a lot of them already from the state. I have people from California, I don't know who they are, tell me, "I got a bill here." I don't reply to those emails. But yeah, we get tons of emails, and then the form emails we get is a staggering volume, because all you can do is hit send. Problem is, you hit, you know, everyone's doing it, and you get the same email, and sometimes you don't even know who these people are, if they don't put their name. We just look at this form email. You know, it's not even the right email to know who they are, so it's like, okay. So, but the, but yes, my aide flagged it, saying, "Hey, take a look at it." So when I get home tonight after another meeting I have tonight, I'll, I'll look at it.
Not putting you on the spot, just saying, we could use your assistance. I know you wouldn't have a chance to have seen it yet, but.
I'll take a look at it. Yeah, my, you know, as a senator, because we represent a hundred thousand people, you know, I get a certain number of dedicated staff. And my aide flags these things with every aide for me, so I have a whole separate email trail. Just flagged emails and told me that was on it, so I will take a look at it. And I'm sure I'll have some questions to talk with you guys and Brian about, you know, about that. But I'm happy to get the emails. People, I have an open-door policy, I encourage people to reach out to me. It's their government, I mean, it's, I don't expect people to come to Harper to see me. That's why I'm always happy and spend a lot of time out in all the towns. So I'm always happy to do that, so. And feel free to reach out to me, but if you don't have my cell number, we can get it for you because I do a lot of work by text. Just don't be surprised, sometimes my replies are one, two in the morning, that's my usual time going to bed. As a doctor, I'm just trained to get by with little sleep. So that will change, when I get older, I'll probably be more. But so I, I do, we will reply, sometimes it may just be a reply that, "I don't know the answer, but we're looking into it," you know, type of thing. So by all means, let me know what's, you know, going on, especially on any bills. I, I wish I could in the middle of the night let you guys know about some of the stuff that happens. But the stuff you're concerned about, then let us, let me know. And certainly, you know, you have Tammy Nuccio and Tim Ackert, who are in the House representing Talon. Let us know, there, there's a lot of work we do between parties and between the two chambers. So it's not uncommon, I'm down in the House, that I have to run up for a vote in the Senate or, because there's a lot of that stuff that we're discussing and trying to hash out. So by all means, let us know, you know, anything of concern or questions. Sometimes it's helpful information to me to work on making a change in a bill. And we're happy to do that as much as we can.
Great. Any other questions?
Yeah, ECS funding, we talked a little bit about the crazy, wacky formula, and it was, it was easier to explain that formula. But it seems like it, it varies, and in a town like Talon, we struggle to get an accurate number that really can justify what the town needs to offset our, our funding for education. So is there, expand a little bit on that?
About the formula?
As far as the formula, or, you know, having ECS fund money, that should come to the town, that should be focused on education. You know, and some of the, some of the stuff we have used towards unfunded mandates, towards other things, and necessarily isn't focusing on where the education system.
I agree. I think, you know, the money that we have that we want to focus on education should be going to education. Now, people have different interesting definitions of education when I talk with some of my fellow legislators. Doesn't always agree with what my thinking has always been over the years. And I'm a proud product of my city's public education. Including my medical school is, UMass, that's public education in a sense. So the formulas are just bizarre. You know, no matter how many times they explain it to me, my, my answer always is, "I don't know why this was created," although it does weight more towards the cities. Certainly, very much so. And there's more legislators who represent cities than towns, but nevertheless, it's a crazy, crazy system. My feeling has been, and I, I've said this, that the state does not need, what I believe is its legal obligation to fund public education. Now, I've had people argue with me what the law really is. I don't know, I'm not a lawyer, I read the law, and to me, it's, we're supposed to be funding public education. And for most of the towns, we come nowhere close to what is considered the median cost.
Right.
And you guys know that, I know that in my own town, you know, very, very well. And so I've always thought we need to repurpose some of the money, there's so much in the state budget that is not a core government priority. That we can actually be doing some core government priorities, like public education, public safety, public health, for example, and really better fund it, but there's a lot of competing interests. There has been an effort to see what to do to make the formula more fair or easier. But then it all, there was an effort last year, but then it seemed to run aground a little bit. More than a little bit. Because certainly those who represent cities don't wanna see their stuff cut. And alliance districts don't wanna lose a certain amount of money, and we all know special education, you know, has to be paid for, and that's very, very expensive, and there's a lot of volatility. One student can move in and the whole budget's, you know, out of whack. And the state just kinda shrugs and shows and says, "Well, that's the town's responsibility." That seems to be what continues to be, you know, that, "Well, the town has to do it." But the town has, you know, limited ways other than property taxes. So to me, if we can better, if we can bring a better ECS system, better way that we fund the special education and other things, that will be good, and that's actually a better way of dealing with property taxes. And I've talked with a number of legislators and said, "Look, you're telling me your town has a high mill rate, but if we can do more and better align the priorities of the state and help the towns more, then there's less of a push to have to up property taxes to pay what has to be paid for." We'll see where, where the big education bill this session sets us. I'm hoping it could set us for next year, working even more, but it's gonna be in steps. So that's one of the things I've been advocating for, is we just need to continue to make the steps to create a better and more fair way that these things are calculated.
Well, I think, and I appreciate your candor with it, because, you know, in a town like Talon, I mean, obviously, the city's rightfully so, I understand why there's a larger chunkers in the cities, it's, it's based on demographics, it's based on wealth of the city and, and those kind of things. And in a town like Talon, we're a smaller town, primarily residential tax-based, so we struggle with those small-town problems with, it's, that's what's funding our education. So when we have our town taxpayers, you know, paying for the major, our education system through taxes, and then we have these unfunded mandates that we need to fulfill, which some of them rightfully so, justifiably so, we need to have these. But getting more aid from the state is paramount, so that we have these unfunded mandates offset by aid from the state that the state is requiring. Then now it's, we're having to cut in other areas, and we can't cut in special education. So then we're cutting in general education, which just in terms is less resources for our general education students and staff. And then it opens up the door for more special education students, because you're not covering it, and it's simple. So I guess my question to you would be, what were some things that you've done to support education in small communities like Talon? Or what are some things that, you know, folks like us or a town council can do to reach out to you as our representative to help support education in Talon?
Well, I've been hearing a lot from people in all my towns. Burton's my biggest, Union's my smallest of less than eight hundred.
Union's the smallest.
Population.
In Connecticut, right? It's smallest in New England, isn't it?
It's the smallest.
Sorry, smallest in the general.
I cite them a lot on the Senate floor. I talk about impacts on small towns. One time, there was a bill that said any town a thousand or more could qualify, and it was, did that supposedly so that every municipality, and I decided Union won't qualify, so we changed it. So, but yes, they are the, the, the smallest population-wise. They seem to run flat, they never seem to grow or decrease, I don't know what they do. So locally, it's a state forest in Union, it's beautiful, I enjoy going there. Yeah, it's right next to my town. In fact, if you go to Union Old Hold Day, you'll see every person from the town there. So, but the, so things I've been trying to do are granular things as much as I can, town by town, and any specific thing that, that's brought up. And some, from some of my towns is dealing with red tape, try to deal with the grants, try to deal with bonding, whatever happens. And then it's also the big picture, which is what are we doing overall to try to help the towns? You know, not that I'm not mindful of the cities, but I'm not representing the cities. And I'm not, I'm not there really just to advocate only for them. So I'm trying to see what we can do there. So part of it was what we did last year through appropriations and also the work of the education committee to put more money in and try to make a commitment and place a marker that we need more money for education. We needed to not do some of these scheduled cuts, we needed to accelerate the phasing of some of the promised funding so we can then continue the work, which would be in this session and hopefully next session, and try to do it longitudinal, which is a bit of a change of a mindset. And so there, so that's, that was actually very nice to see and participate in. Ideally, I'd love to be able to get more money for public education. And I've actually, last year and this year, flagged various items, saying, "Why are we spending X amount of money on this? What is, is this really a priority over education and would love to repurpose it?" But then there's a fight by those people who want that. I keep on flagging those items to highlight the fact that, you know, what are we doing with these, with, with the budget when we're having to make certain that I believe by law, we have this obligation for public education? So there's that to try to continue to move. It's been a bipartisan effort, and I'm glad that it is moving. Again, I don't know where that's gonna pan out, we're only halfway or so through this session. So we'll have to see where that pans out. But some of it is things that aren't related to money, you know, getting extra money. Some of it is actually stopping things that I think are bad from even making, you know. I cite Calvin Coolidge, he was Senate President in Massachusetts over a hundred years ago. And he said that you spend more time killing bad bills than you do supporting good ones. That's very true, I, I know that well as a town official when I, in my town, but I also know that well as a senator. And so there's been a lot of stuff that we have stopped that doesn't make the light of day, that gets promoted or whatever, and sometimes, and sometimes that's stopping certain unfunded mandates, sometimes that's stopping efforts to cut certain funds and move them to something else or make things more difficult from a process for red tape. And so we do a lot of that finding, it doesn't always make the papers or the news, but there's a lot of that that does happen. And some of it is town-specific, I know a few of my towns, there were some things that were really gonna whack them. And we had to band together and stop some of that stuff from happening. Because people that, when they propose these things, they don't think about what the ramification's gonna be elsewhere in the state. And that's part of the problem. But a lot of it, the bigger thing for me is, what can we do with more funding? And make certain that when we've committed to the funding, we're not starting to roll it back. So heading into next year, for example, if we have made the commitment in this biennium budget that we're in the second year of, and we make adjustments, that should set a marker that, don't stop rolling it back unless there's certain reasons, we just need to keep moving forward. That, that's, that's a long-term type project, I've been talking with people. You know, it's not my own idea, others have been talking about it as well. That's where you can try to change the mindset and the planning. As opposed to, quite frankly, the state just looks from two-year budget to two-year budget many, many times. Because it waits for all of these, you know, all of its tax revenue data and everything else to come in, to make certain decisions. But if we know, heading into next year's budget, that there's certain things we know we need to have, hopefully, that can make the process a bit better. So for us to make certain we don't backtrack. So it, it's a combination of, of both things, but there's a number of different things, you know, looking to see what, you know, we can do. For example, also for education, we're continuing, we talk about workforce education, workforce development, what we do with teachers. I just came from a C E A meeting with a room full of teachers, listening to their concerns and things like that. And what do we do to make certain we're supporting teachers and the next generation of teachers and things like that? So trying to do things like that, and also for the kids. Not every kid wants to go to college, but can go to do something else, and what do we do with that? More grants have been available and things like that, we try to help promote opportunities for the kids. And there's been, you know, a push for that, and, and right now, it looks like what we made a commitment for in the budget, we're not gonna backtrack on that. We're gonna keep it and not cut it, which is good. That's been a big fight to try to stop cuts that were initially being proposed for this year.
Well, I look forward to seeing some more stuff for, you know, representing Talon, I appreciate it. And, you know, I think it, it's so important when we talk about some different things that you, you hit the nail on the head when you said, you know, not everybody wants to go to college, right? So some are gonna be your athletes, some are gonna be your artists, some are gonna be your tradesmen, tradesmen and women, some are gonna go and go into college, you know, it's paramount that the state assists so that we can continue to support our, our portion of the budget, we need to continue to support the whole student, every student. Because every single student has a different pathway. And sometimes the towns are so, our, the hands are tied, and we're, you're trying to do what we can, and, and we look to the state for help and guidance. And so I, I look forward to watching and listening to this session and, and Talon will be your squeaky wheel, right? So I know, it, it, we need to continue to, to be competitive for our youngest citizens' education and support our educators to, I mean, we could have the future President of the United States in Talon, all those schools right now. We could have the, the future senator, we could have a future doctor, we could have a future, you know, so all those things.
We do have.
We do, well, we do, these young ladies.
That's right.
These young ladies are mind-blowingly amazing, so.
Well, those are all important points, because the state has done a lousy job over the years investing in different pathways. Now the fad is in the legislature, "Oh, we need to deal with workforce development." The workforce development starts in the schools. And what we do, investing in the manufacturing bike lines, like, you know, Quintivore Valley has a great, EB is, you're aware of. Those are kids that can get great training, and then they know they can get a job at like EB or, you know, all, all the, all the other industries that are in EB. that are in EB. But also what do we do to give kids in high school opportunities that they want in different subjects and get credit? That also gets into what do we do funding higher education in the state? And that's a big fight because what do we do with funding of efficiencies right now that UConn has and the Connecticut State and College and University System outside of UConn? And that's also another big fight. And you're and you're talking hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars with competing figures to make this to try to figure out which ones are right. But, you know, not every kid is going to be able to afford to go to Harvard. I mean, if I had to go to my alma mater now at Brandeis, I wouldn't be able to afford that. It's, you know, it took me forever to pay off my ten to twelve percent interest loan, what the price tag is now for that place. But we do have a good system in UConn. We do have good community colleges. I've had meetings with the UConn president and the chancellor of C S C U. What do we do funding that so that way kids can access that without the systems having to say, we just have to keep upping tuition? That's a big fight right now, the legislature. Where is that money? And what are we going to do with that? Because we need to make certain if they want to advance in whatever way, there's an opportunity for them.
I think it's interesting that, you know, with your respect to your towns, the elected vote, that's a good segue, not right, second, but segue into Portrait of a Graduate. Because we do have Mr. Rudy here, Science Supervisor. He is one of the principal driving forces, leading Port of Graduate or Port of Graduate in the district. And in the presentation, we'll be talking about how the workforce development has really shifted and changed and how workforce development now, you know, there are no more toll takers. There are no more, you know, some of these jobs that were done by people in back of the industrial model of education, you know, when a certain segment of the population is going to go do certain kind of jobs, those jobs have to change now because machines are going to be doing those jobs in warehouses and on toll, you know, driving, driving trucks eventually. It's going to be done by machines. And so that we have to be developing a workforce that can come out and work for elected vote that has certain, you know, skill set. So it's a good, really, I think, a great dovetail to some of the things that Senator Gordon's talking about, not to, I just took that opportunity to connect the two things here.
It is, we have to make certain that we're training people, giving them opportunities for the evolving economy, but there's still a lot of hands on stuff. We're still going to need plumbers.
Oh, yeah.
And electricians, and we still need doctors to do hands on stuff. But the A I is never going to replace the work that I do, you know, in there with a patient and their family. So there are those things that we have to maintain. But yes, when you look at like EB, what it used to be to build us up and now what it is, you need people who can program the machines and, you know, do all that type of stuff and then know what the machine is doing and be able to step in and do things also hands on, you know, if needed. And, you know, I toured some of those manufacturing training centers and they're phenomenal. But those are the types of things then that those folks who go through those training programs, they almost have a guaranteed job at EB and all of them. So so that's what we should be, you know, doing, you know, more. There's a lot of other things we can be doing as well to try to make certain we keep people here. Some of it is our high cost of living in this state, but also it's what we do with the red tape of licensing, which is trying to streamline that. And I've been glad that we've been doing that, but also cutting down on the license fees, which have gotten exorbitant. And I think that we're going to be successful. I I spearheaded a bill with a few of my colleagues to try to limit the licensing fees at two hundred because it's amazing the number of fees that balloon. And per se, someone who is low income or middle income, that's an expense. And Connecticut likes to charge it every year. Many states charge it two to three years. So we're actually an expensive state for licensing. So and then the process you go through to be licensed or certified, you know, so we want to keep people here when we train them or they go through school. So there's some of that as well, to try to make certain. Because if we do a good job educating and training them, we want them here, part of the economy. That's what we want.
And educators have license fees too, hundreds of dollars.
Yes. And this part of this effort. This effort is to do what to do to limit it and to streamline it. Oh, yeah, my license fees are very expensive, but, you know, but it's and that, you know, we're trying to limit it because it shouldn't be a moneymaker for the state. My feeling is that we limit these fees. I would love the fees being zero, but the first step is limited to two hundred. If people, if we have more people working here in the jobs, they're helping our economy. We're going to get more tax revenue and they're going to spend money. And as you know, the spending cycle, as every dollar circulates through the economy in the state, it magnifies. And I think, you know, we, for example, the Commissioner of Consumer Protection that deals with a lot of licenses, I know him well, he's a good friend, he recognizes that and has been supportive of our efforts to cap some of these fees, to make it easier for people. Because a lot of these folks who are pulling their first licenses are young, so to speak. And that can be a big issue for them to afford when they have debt. You know, they may be starting a young family, mortgage on a house, do they need to be spending hundreds of dollars on a licensing fee that, quite frankly, the state does nothing? I put my license in, I data enter it all, and then I give my credit card number, I hit send, they send me a confirmation, and then immediately I get an email saying, here's your renewed medical license, print it because we don't mail it to you. I did all the work entering the data, the state did nothing. So so there's an effort for that as well, to try to be of help. And I know for the teachers, they've been looking to try to streamline and make these
Sounds very similar.
Yeah, certification costs.
Including all our stove and, you know, two hundred thirty dollar.
It was a day we used to do it all on paper and they would have to data enter it, but not anymore.
But we do the data entry and we pay.
Thank you, Senator Gordon.
Sorry, I monopolized a lot of the time.
No, that's entirely.
I'm always happy to hear from folks.
I have a list of questions.
We are, we are certainly blessed here in this town to have only you, Representative Nuccio and Hacker that that are willing to listen. So I highly encourage everybody to reach out, not only for the the things we need, but also the good things. So I would absolutely like to invite you to come back again.
Anytime when I'm able, I'm always happy to get out and about my thirteen towns. I try to do as much as I can. My wife doesn't see me much, but, you know, the twenty five years of being married, sometimes she's happy if I'm not there.
We'll send you this over.
That's right, that's right. But anytime, but also if there's things that you weren't able to go over tonight or you come up with things, please, by all means, if you don't have my cell number, get it. I know, I think a lot of you do have it already, but happy to share it and happy to meet this other stuff you have. Anytime, let me know. I don't mind any of my towns or constituents being squeaky wheels. I'd rather hear from people than not hear from people. That's the way I've always viewed it. That's what I do as a, I joke with my state rep, he hears from me. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Thanks, everyone. If you don't mind, I I would love to stay, but I have to get home for a nine o'clock meeting.
I will.
So.
Make sure you drive safe.
I will. It's an easy forty five minute ride, so not much traffic. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Now, if there are no objections, Dr. Willett, I'm going to make a slight deviation from the plan. I'd like to go ahead and do this representative report and then we'll relax. That way, these young people can go if they will. Please?
All right. Hi. Okay, so Spirit Week is next week and the week after that is even better than Spirit Week break. But Spirit Week, Monday, we have Pajama Day, Tuesday, we have Twin Day, Wednesday, we have Country Day, Thursday, we have Jersey Day, and then Friday, we have Class Color.
What do you have Friday?
Class Color Day.
Which day is Country Day?
Wednesday.
And this Friday, there is absolutely no schools.
And then also on Class Color Day, we have an Eagle Rally. Students are currently standing up to participate in events. A link to a Google form is posted in everyone's Eagle Block Google Classroom, and it's also been given out at Lunch Block.
And also Quarter Three is ending on April third.
Last week, last Friday, Tonlin students, a few competed in the Innovation Challenge. I'm sure some of you have seen it on your Facebook, maybe? Yeah, your Facebook. But Tonlin teams placed in first, second, and fourth, and then today they got called down to the office and received Amazon gift cards of varying amounts from a hundred to ten dollars.
And also this spring, we have a Girls Five Football League, which will play against four other teams in the C C C in a one day tournament. All the games are Sundays starting at at two or three P M. And the first game is April fourteenth and they finish May twelfth. Any questions, comments?
Good question.
Yeah.
We, in the Communications Committee, we just put out a survey for extramurders. I didn't know if you guys saw that.
We did.
Pass it on, get even, you know.
I know a lot of people are talking about it.
Good.
What exactly is it for? Because that's mostly what people have been talking about.
I think we're we're trying to to find interest in in what kinds of things that, you know, students or parents or staff members would think would be interesting to students. So if you guys could look that over, maybe pass it through town, our town council, Student Council. But also, you know, reflect on what you would have liked when you were younger as as well. It doesn't have to be just for what would interest you right now, but maybe.
I know the high school is generally open process for when high school young adults want a new club.
Yeah.
They they just go to Mr. Poland. So I know it's like you have a way of already doing that, but this is sort of passing the net very wide and seeing, you know, we do hear a lot from high school students because they generally speak out to Mr. Poland, but we don't necessarily hear from the community members, the younger kids, things like that. So if there's anyone that you can connect us to or or any ideas that are exciting, that you shared Mr. Poland, put it in the forum too.
Yeah, all right.
I know you want to add your siblings, so maybe tap tap them or put their thoughts into the forum.
All right.
Any other questions? Thank you, thank you both.
I look forward to seeing stuff on Spirit Week. Those are the towns, yeah.
All right. Dr. Willett, we're moving on then to K two, the Portrait of a Graduate.
All right, so as I said, Mark Ruiz here is our Science Supervisor. He also is heading up the Portrait of a Graduate to the district. And he has done a presentation for the Grickham Committee, that the Grickham Committee then wanted to move forward to the board. So he is here with us tonight to present an incredibly informative, but also succinct presentation on it and then have a Q and A at the end for any questions that anybody has. So without further ado, if you'd like to run, I'll run this for.
Very good, thanks for having me. So, yeah, I will apologize to those of you that did see the the presentation in the committee meeting, but if there are things that come up along the way, as you've had a chance to think about it some more that you want to, you know, ask about or or have me expand on at all, let me know. But it is a chance to kind of, again, put this in front of all of you now to see the work that's been done over the last about four and a half years at this point. So I thought I would take some time first to just sort of put it out there for everybody so we're all thinking the same thing when we say that word, Portrait of a Graduate, what it is, what it means, why we're doing it. And then we'll kind of, I'll walk you through what we've done. So we've gone through a number of stages over the last four and a half years to build the Portrait of a Graduate to where it is, and then we'll talk about where we are already in terms of next steps and and beyond in the next couple of years especially. So we're hoping this will work because this was a video that was used early on in our process. I'll talk a little bit more about what that process was in just a moment, but it really helped to kind of put people in the right frame of mind for this. I think it also represents a quote that I came across just like last week, actually, that I, to me, represents why this is important and where my mind is with education in general right now. And that is to not confine your children to your own learning, for they were born in another world. I think we joke all the time, right, about how kids can't, they don't know how to use their phone, they have no idea the experience of getting up to change the channel on the T V. We joke about that, but that's reality. So the things that we learned had a purpose at the time and no longer do. So to force them to learn those same things seems not to make much sense. And so this video is a way to sort of put that forward too and thinking about the world that we live in at the moment that's already leaps and bounds beyond this video, quite frankly, to sort of get that mindset. So we'll give it a shot in the hopes that it works. So for some people, those videos are scary because it seems to suggest that there's no jobs anymore, right? They're all being replaced by robots and A I. But the fact of the matter is, there's people behind that that had to program that, that had to build those machines, that had to probably, that has to service them, troubleshoot them, fix them, all those things. So it's not so much that the jobs are gone, it's they're different. The skills that are necessary, the kinds of thinking that we have to develop in kids is completely different in terms of prepping them to go out into the world and be a productive worker. So that was what really set the stage. And that was, we watched that video five years ago and it wasn't a brand new video at the time. So some of the stuff that you saw in that video is already well advanced beyond that. I still get scared, though, by the the self driving trucks and the Urcoobers and things like that. That's what bothers me. But anyway, the other piece I I wanted to throw in there too is that a lot of this is driven very much by all of the national organizations across all subject areas, and it very much is a part of me, us, that we just finished going through the initial process up at the high school here. So there is a wide base of support for the fact that we need to move education forward and we need to to very clearly identify and support and teach these kinds of skills, these higher level things, beyond just throwing a bunch of information at kids, expecting them to memorize it, spin it on a test and forget it the next day, because we all know that's what we did. So that said, let me walk you through how this sort of got started. What we're trying to do again is thinking of it like a G P S process. The red is where kids are coming into our district. The green is where we want them to go by graduation. And that's what's a little bit unique about this too, is visions, missions, and things like that have often been high school oriented because they're the ones that ultimately push the kid out into the world and say, yes, they've met that expectation. The fact of the matter is, if the schools before that, all the grades before that, don't do their job, how is the high school expected to get them there? So this truly is a pre K to twelve vision Portrait of a Graduate that we've developed, and it's becoming more and more functional in that sense as the days go on. Um but we really want to think about not where the kids are, not what they can or can't do, but where we think they may need to be, because quite frankly, we're prepping them for a world we don't even know about yet.
Hmm.
Think again about the last changes, changes in the last five years. We're talking about a thirteen year education for a child. We have no idea what the world's like at the end of that. But what do we think they're going to need? And so that's what we've uh developed. So the process, uh starting on the next slide here, is um we started with a group of skills and dispositions that we wanted to identify. Um so we came together and first identified what that means. Um so this gives you some idea. The skills is what you've typically thought of. A lot of people, when they think of this word, think problem solving, critical thinking, communication. Those are skills. The dispositions is a little more in some people's minds, the touch and feeling end of things. Um but it's no less crucial. We need kids to be resilient and push through challenges. We need kids to have a a growth mindset and have integrity. These are things that aren't skills per se, that you can't measure on a rubric, that you might not find a task in class that specifically measures that thing. Um but it is very much something that we need to develop in our students in order for them to be successful in the world they're going to go into. Um the skills are gonna have rubrics. We're in the process of that uh development at the high school now. The dispositions are gonna probably have more statements for reflection. Um there are also things that don't necessarily um aren't as concrete from day to day. Um I often use the example, I consider myself a relatively empathetic person. There are days where that's not true. Fortunately, today is not one of them. Um but, you know, they they tend to vary a little bit more with our circumstances because they're more emotionally based, but our emotional state is definitely gonna make a difference on that. That doesn't mean you're not a kind person, just because you weren't kind today, because you were in a bad mood. Um short on sleep, whatever. Um problem solving, critical thinking, those things tend to be a bit more stable. They're also the things that we're used to measuring. So they're gonna feel a little bit more familiar, I think, to people. Um I think I kind of got to some of those. Uh so what we did, we started with a group back in the fall of twenty nineteen. Uh it was a wide ranging group. It was actually kind of cool. I haven't been part of a group that's been that representative. Um so there were board event members at the time that joined us, a number of people from across the community and businesses and social service. Uh we had parents, students from the high school at the time, uh and then a wide range of our um public school employees, both admin and teachers, representing all of the buildings and central office. Um and so we worked at the time with Ed Advance and a representative who facilitated the thinking process um that we did to come up with the mission and vision. And essentially, it was a two-part process. We came up with statements that we felt represent the bigger picture of what we want to do, what we want to accomplish with the education in talent. And then we went through a process of then identifying the most crucial skills and dispositions that we wanted to develop through that uh mission. Um so that is represented. You'll see kind of what we did on the next couple of slides. We went through what they called a consensus protocol. So in groups, we came up with potential statements that we thought were important to us. We shared those to the larger room. Um and then each individual was asked to uh vote essentially on a five-point scale, five, four, three, two, one, um on which of those statements were utmost important. So five was your most important, uh one was your least important, but you know, top five kind of thing. And we totaled those up. So you'll notice statement C there, uh four, uh same thing happened there. So statement C says, we place the educational welfare of our students at the center of all decision making. Ninety-five points. That means ninety-five fingers across all the people in the room were held up to support that statement. Um and so you'll see varying levels of uh votes that went in there. And and we also, some of that stuff that was blacked out is because we did have a little discussion to either merge or um acknowledge that some statements were repetitive in nature. Um so we boiled it down to the ones that you see and then voted on those. And um the top one that were are now represented in our uh vision and mission. The same thing was done on the next slide. You can see with the skills and dispositions. Uh and so you can see again, critical creative thinking, working independently, collaboratively, innovative problem solving with the top three skills. Um and after some work, uh we condensed those dispositions on the right-hand side there down to the four uh that you're familiar with. So that was the initial process. And we so we created from that the document uh on the next slide that was the initial portrait of a graduate. Again, that was the work that came out of that group. This may look somewhat familiar uh in a previous uh life, so to speak. That's what the portrait graduate graduate was. Um the thing is, again, that was that representative group. Now it was the job of having to bring it to the district and build some uh buy-in and and um get them invested in what this portrait of graduates were to be, because there are some shifts to to what we've been doing. Um and so we took some time um in February, I believe in twenty twenty, on the next slide, uh to use the PD day to literally walk the staff, the entire district, through that same process. Um so I'll be frank, we rolled the dice a bit. I convinced Dr. Willett to to roll the dice because I was pretty sure we were gonna come out with the same outcomes from our staff as we did in that room. Um so we didn't tell them what the outcome was. We didn't tell them there was a portrait of a graduate that had been developed in that room. But we walked them through the exact same process. So we took the entire district, broke it up into groups uh that were representative, again, of all buildings, all walks of life, so to speak, within the district, and had them go through the same process. We didn't do it so much with the statements. We did it with the skills and dispositions. Um and so in those rooms, they were uh the administrators uh ran the group, having experienced it in the bigger group, ran it, and they were tasked with bringing out three to four skills, three to four dispositions that they felt were important from their work through the exact same process. So the next slide shows you one example, um but that's just the the outline of the process. That's what rooms were doing. So in their case, they had all those dispositions. And then again, they went through that five, four, three, two, one voting process, and they had four that they circled. We asked them to bring those back as post-its uh to the auditorium after each of the groups were done. And we took those post-its then and aligned them to what we had already created. So on the next slide, you'll see, um I believe, yeah. So there's three of our um skills and dispositions, and you can see the number of post-its that came out of those rooms that mirrored those things already. So fortunately, the 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 bet paid off, and we were able to say to them, look, you guys, as a district, without even knowing it, have the same values as the people in that room did. So this portrait of a graduate that we've developed clearly represents what we all value in education. So the buy-in at that point was pretty awesome. Um what we did notice, however, on the next slide, is that there were some outliers. There were some skills and dispositions that people felt were important that weren't represented in those seven that we had initially had. Um and two things in particular came up. One was communication, um which is not unusual, kids being able to communicate effectively, either through writing or speaking or whatever. Um but also the sense that we need to develop kids with a more of a global awareness. Uh and so what was done with those two things is in honoring the fact that the staff as a whole saw these gaps essentially in what we had done, is we added a statement to the mission that reflects the uh the global, the need to develop that global awareness and global connection. And we added a skill of effective communication. So on the next slide is what then was put forth as the portrait of a graduate with those two additions, again, to honor what the district uh staff saw as necessary additions to the work of that initial group. So that is where we worked from for a while, because now we have the mission, we have these skills and dispositions we said are important. But unfortunately, the next step of of putting that into play is to figure out, well, what does exactly that mean when we say effective communication? How do I measure whether a kid is an effective communicator or a good problem solver? Um and so, starting in twenty twenty-one, and again, using that next um PD day in twenty twenty-two, we started to get into two things. Um we needed to first define what the skills and dispositions mean. So we needed statements. We refer to those as transfer statements because they're statements that are skills and dispositions. Those things are universal. Doesn't matter what subject area you teach. They should transfer across grades. They should transfer across buildings, across subjects. It shouldn't matter. Um so we started with, without recreating the wheel, we went to districts across the state that have done some of this work and pulled statements from them. Um the only places where we um didn't have as much to pull from is for integrity and growth mindset. Those are relatively unique to Colin and Colin's thinking, um which I'm actually very proud of because I think they're huge in what we do here and what we need to develop in kids. Um and they're more difficult, I think, to define and to go after with kids. But that doesn't mean we don't do it. And I think in some other districts, because of that difficulty, they decided not to, whatever. Uh but we decided to take that on. So some of the skills and dispositions had tons of of potential ideas to choose from. We looked at Hartford Manchester. We looked at Avon Farmington. We looked at uh I believe Waterbury and some of the uh Districts Greenwich I know I looked at. So we pulled statements uh that very much aligned already to those skills and dispositions. And it's the starting point. We asked the leadership teams in the fall and winter to take a look at those and pare them down a little bit. Which ones do you like? Which ones don't you like? Do you want to tweak any of these? And then again, we brought it back to the whole staff at a PD day in February. Um and so we we gave them those statements. We asked them to pare it down to about two to three. Because the deal is, you have to be able to measure all that stuff. If we say this is what we're gonna do, we need to actually do it. If we have twelve, that's not gonna happen. That's not manageable. So getting it down to a a crucial two to three per skill or disposition was the goal. And so on that next slide, you'll see what those groups came out with. Very similar structure. We actually used the same groups as we did the year before. So those highly representative groups of district uh wide uh representation went through and took those sample statements, which are the ones that are actually crossed out there. They either adopted them, edited them, or completely rewrote them with their mentalities in mind. Um and in this case, that group for independent and collaborative work came up with three statements. And so those are now defining what it means to be effective uh at independent and collaborative work. So now we can measure those. We can develop specific criteria aligned with those, and that's uh where things will will end up going. So with all of that work done across all the skills and dispositions, what you see in front of you now, that lovely handout that went around um and on the next couple of slides, are those statements. So again, you'll see one to three statements in each one that defines what we mean by that particular skill or disposition. So now that we've got that, the next step forward is, okay, let's start doing something with it. So essentially, we have the green on there, right? Now we need the roadmap. We need to know what kids are doing and what we're doing as a faculty to develop them to get to that green at the end. Um and so the first step in that was actually to honor what we already do. We have quite a bit in this district we do that works at these skills. Problem solving has been a school-wide rubric at the high school since before I've been here. So this, some of the steps not new. We need to honor that. We need to expose that and use that. Uh but at the same time, also look for gaps. So like I said, integrity is a relatively new focus. It's been at the high school, actually, but not so much in the other buildings. And we need to see if there is there anything we're doing now that could be leveraged for that. Um and so we did that through the the course of um the end of twenty twenty-two in terms of asking staff to really look at what they do in the classroom and in the building and think about the alignment to those skills and disposition. And so we have a document at this point um where that was done. So each skill, each task across grades and buildings has an alignment, a quick description of what it is, uh and a quick uh alignment to a skill or disposition, and maybe even a specific transfer goal statement that we think that's that task is gonna help us measure. So there's tons of that stuff that's in there that we're already doing. But again, in looking at that, there were definitely gaps that we saw that we'll have to work on in terms of providing more opportunities for students. So that was step one. Step two is then to start actually looking at um what we have. So get the next one. Uh this year, the focus has been really getting uh the high school going on their rubrics. So they've had school-wide rubrics uh for a long time, but there are some alignment to what we have in the new skills and dispositions and some not. So they've had reading, writing and speaking, for example. A lot of that aligns to some of the problem-solving work, but a lot of the critical thinking work. So we're able to borrow from some of what they have and bring it into these proposed rubrics for the skills and dispositions. We put that in front of them actually early this year, uh got some feedback, and then sort of had to put it on pause because of the ask. Um we'll actually be getting back to that next month and in May to hopefully get the the high schools to the point where they feel like these new rubrics um will be functional and we can put them into play next year. Um the other piece is, uh in February, this just happened, we had Berchbrot and TIS um start working at the dispositions. Um I think I can say this with some credibility, having been a high school teacher. The skills are sort of where we're we're comfortable. We're used to working on the skills kind of stuff with kids. As a high school teacher, dispositions are kind of like, eh, if you haven't figured out how to be kind to kids, I'm not gonna help you. That's not true, unfortunately, but a lot of high school teachers sometimes struggle with that. Elementary teachers, that's their wheelhouse. They're teaching kids to be kind and to share and, you know, do those kinds of things. So we actually wanted to start the disposition discussion down at the bottom and work its way up, which is also unusual because many things in districts tend to start in the high school and be fed down, which I can tell you the lower grades love, being told what to do about higher grades. So this is a chance to flip that dynamic and give them some input and control as well. Um so what we did in February is took just those two buildings, again, sort of created um representative groups and asked them to create what we called at the time, I can statements. So if I am kind, I can notice that my friend might need help. I can, you know, whatever. We asked them to kind of use that mentality. We did give them flexibility, though. Not every statement that they came up with had to be, I can, um I may, I want to, I whatever, that we get them some flexibility. But the mentality that we need statements at that level for these kids to understand, because quite frankly, what's in front of you? A kindergartner can't read it. So it's useless to them. Um and it's useless to the teachers in conveying what it is that we want to start to build at that level. Um so they were able to identify statements specific to kids at those grade levels, K five in this particular case. Um and I think the next slide shows what they uh one example of what they produced. So what we have is, we asked them to do two things. We asked them to group it in uh grade level bands to kind of again, represent that developmental process uh within these skills and dispositions, in this case, dispositions. Um and then we asked them to create those statements. So you can again, notice some of them say, I can, some of them say, I will, some of them say, I am. The concept is, these are statements now that can make more sense to kids, that can bring these transfer statements into their world and their level of development and also be something that they can then think about and reflect on and say to you, yeah, I I know my words and actions can change people's feelings, and I know that because I just, you know, did this and my friend didn't really like that. They can, it's at their level now to understand. So this work will now start to make its way up. We're in the process of refining this. This is actually the raw output of that day. Um so we're in the process of refining that just a little bit. We'll bring it back to the staff for sort of a final review before we move it forward to the middle school. That said, I've already shared this with the middle school um because they are already in the process of looking at their uh sore expectations. And there's a lot of overlap with the disposition there. Um and so in the process of doing that, so that they didn't get too far down the road with that work, while also incorporating the portrait of a graduate into it, I shared this with them. So they've seen these statements. They know sort of what's coming their way. And we're actually hoping to get them started on their next level of uh expectations, what's beyond this for six, eight uh in these areas, using these as the the feeding uh feeding up. Um so that's really the next steps, right? So now we're starting to put this into into play. What we will have within the next two years, probably, maybe three at most, is what I've been referring to as a progression. So this is an example from what I work with in science. What science did is they took each of their skills, uh practices, we call them, and wrote out what it looks like again at those different grade bands. So there's a K two. This is what kids do for asking questions. When they get to three, five, they should be doing that and these additional things, and so on and so forth through middle and high school. We will be able to do that. That's what we're in the process of creating. So those I can statements are the K two and three, five expectations in the progression. The middle school will set theirs, and then the high school will set theirs. And we'll be able to see that through the thirteen grades that kids will experience in talent in a single document for each of the skills and dispositions. Um with the skills, it'll be more of those rubrics. So the rubrics at the high school will be down to the middle school. They'll get a chance to take a a a look at that and decide what what are we getting and how do we develop them to get to the entry level of the high school rubric? And then Berchbrot and TIS will look at developing rubrics to bring them to the to the middle school level. So we'll have K two rubrics, three, five rubrics, six, eight, nine, twelve. Again, showing that progression, that growth and development over time. Um that's actually all right there. So that gives you a little bit of a timeline on that. Um again, some of that is already in play, even though it says twenty-four, twenty-five. Some of it's already happening this year because of the way things have been able to play out, we weren't sure what would or wouldn't happen. Um so that's what's coming. The other piece is now to start to put this into the curriculum. Um so the uh understanding by design format has three stages. The desired result is kind of like your standards, your big skills, essential questions, things like that. Assessment in stage two, and then the learning plan is the day-to-day of what I do in my classroom. Well, in stage one, the transfer goals need to go in there. So I actually asked the science department at the high school to do this uh just last week. They took a look at their units um in biology, integrated science, chemistry and physics to start to think about where these skills and dispositions come into play. And again, to identify one or two, that not only am I teaching the kid physics, I'm also teaching them something about problem solving, something about um resilience, maybe, whatever, is pertinent to that particular unit. Um because at the next stage, that also needs to start to bleed into the assessment a little bit. That needs to bleed into the day-to-day instruction. Because how does a kid become a problem solver if I don't teach him how to be a problem solver? Um so that is uh in process at its very infant levels, but that's one of the next steps. Across the district, we'll be putting those transfer goals into the curriculum documents and into the units and instruction. Um the other piece is on the next slide, to think about where things fit into the bigger picture across the board. So I mentioned at the high school, for example, integrity has already been a part of their Eagle Pride acronym. But there are places where uh this stuff very much aligns to what we're doing in these buildings already. Uh Ruler, for example, our our SEL uh program is very much aligned to empathy, kindness, resilience, growth mindset. All those things are in there. So as we're doing lessons to get kids going in Ruler, we need to be embedding these dispositional statements. These I can statements need to start playing in those lessons and things like that. It needs to all dovetail together. Um and really impressing upon people that what we do has to all work together. It can't be these disparate things, these a thousand initiatives. They really aren't a thousand initiatives. They all need to feed into this umbrella and support that portrait of a graduate development. Um and so it will become a very much a decision-driving force uh within the district in order to say, as we are bringing something in or as we're evaluating something we're already doing, is it supporting this portrait of a graduate? And how so? And if it's not, we either need to revise it or remove it. We either need to revise it or remove it and find something that does. So you'll see listed a bunch of things that certainly come into play. I'm sure you guys are excited to see the nest in there, right? But the nest is kind of the final opportunity for kids to demonstrate that they've met these things. So as the artifacts go into the nest. They're put in there, I think, based on skills, right? The problem-solving, critical thinking, right? But as you do that, there hopefully should be an opportunity to reflect on the disposition too, looking to play. As I did that social studies project, I had to really use my empathy skill to think about what these people went through. You know, at that time in this country, so on and so forth. So there'll be not only skills shown through tasks and rubrics. But that opportunity for a kid to reflect on how they're also demonstrating a disposition at the same time. The last piece is just to show you what this will look like when it goes live, public-facing and honestly, for anyone to to have access to. So we've talked about the concept that these are the pillars that uphold the all of the work we do in the district. So this is our our graphic and it will be a. Slideshow essentially that will encompass everything. So you may recall on that empathy and kindness slide with the statements, it had kind of like a pillar going down the middle. So each of these will become a slide like that. So when you click on integrity, for example, it will show you that was just the K five stuff. We will have K twelve slides. So you'll be able to see all of the statements, that entire progression on one slide. For the four skills, it will be links to the rubrics for all of the levels, K twelve. And so you would be able to go through there back and forth and look at what those progressions are, how those skills are developing through all the grades and all the buildings. And getting kids again through that pre-K twelve experience in this district. And helping them hopefully to walk out this this town into a world that they can be successful in. I agreed once.
He did an amazing, amazing job of doing a lot of, a lot of important content and 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 a great, great.
They don't call me D O G Voyager. It really is. Yeah, it really is.
All the way through to keep us consistent and.
And the hard part too is keeping it. I mean, you may have noticed in the dates, we started this pre-pandemic. I feel like that's like D C A D, like. We started this and then it pretty much stopped for a year and a half. So we had to really get people back on board. That was part of why we did what we did with the transfer goals, because we had to get people invested in, back in it again. Oh yeah, I remember this thing we did right before we shut down. The February, before we shut down. We did that that first, you know, thing where we had people identify the skills and dispositions. And, you know, have them really get that buy-in and then we all went home for the other half essentially. So we really had to come back and rebuild that connection again with the skills and dispositions and then, you know, transfer goals. We've been able to keep it going from there.
Right. My exciting go around this, just thinking. Do you feel or have you heard from feedback from staff or teachers or administrators? Intertwining some of this as a challenge to or a loss of subject matter? That is in the classroom, like, hey, you know, we usually have done ten segments in science throughout from September till June. But now we're only able to get through eight, you know, if we're lucky because you're either taking time away to develop certain strategies or. Just these other exercises, say, the problem-solving and empathy or whatever, is taking, you know, two lessons out of the entire year. We used to do ten or only do an eight.
Yeah, right. I think so. I think there's two ways to answer that. One is, again, much of this has been happening. It's really actually making it more explicit. So instead of mysteriously teaching the kid how to problem solve, I'm specifically telling you at this moment, we're working on your ability to problem solve and here's how we're doing it. So it's almost pulling the curtain off of what we've been doing. The second piece is, these transitions are actually not new. So just speaking from science, the the shift within G S S has done exactly this. And so it's a, it's more of a focus on quality over quantity anyway. So for me to just walk you through, what I used to do in biology is walk you through all those chemical processes and all those cell parts and. All of the kingdoms and phyla of all the living things on the planet and then do ecology and evolution and probably not actually get all that, because that's a lot to do in one year. It's picking out, how do I make you think like a scientist and figuring out what pieces of those content will help me do that with you? So it's been a paradigm shift for people because it's taken the onus off of the stuff and more on the skills. And the stuff becomes the vehicle for learning how to think. So it has been a shift in that sense. So if I'm talking to someone who's been teaching for a while, they may say to you. I used to do this, that and the other. I used to do all those kingdom phylum. I love that. But I had to stop at some point and say, do I really need to know that as an everyday person in the world walking around? Do I need to know what phylum a mushroom belongs to? No. As much as that pains me, no, right? So why am I spending all the time on that? There are topics that I need to spend more time at a deeper level to get you to think more critically about genetic engineering person. I need to spend a lot more time there than I ever did before, because that's all over the place and you hear about it. And I need you to be able to wade through the truth and the facts and the misinformation and all that other stuff. That's vastly more important right now than just throwing a bunch of stuff at you.
Well, and it's not like they, not like they put aside the pacing guide or anything. It's really more of keeping us on the rails. So for instance, when we are teaching. Are we, are we doing units such that it emboders critical and creative thinking? Because if we're not, then it's it's not as effective of the unit. The, you know, teaching and pedagogy to be effective, it has to include these core elements. And by identifying those core elements and then by embedding them in through lines throughout all of our curriculum and through all of our pedagogy and instruction. We're ensuring that by the time that child graduates, AKA portrait of a graduate. They can effectively communicate. They're empathetic human beings. They act with integrity when they face difficulty in the world. They approach problems with a growth mindset. They are effectively and critically thinking about things. And that doesn't just happen. We have to make a purposeful effort to make sure that all the pedagogy, all the instruction, all the pacing, everything we do. It, you know, it emphasizes and and helps the children, young adults, develop in those ways. So it's making sure that we control the quality of the education we're providing by clearly identifying what we want them to graduate with. And understanding by design works backward from, here's where our end is. How do we get there? I mean, seven years, how do we get there? And if we're not doing this, it's like a bunch of ships sailing off in five different directions. This brings us into the alignment so we know what we want our kids to graduate with at the end and we're clear on it. Everybody's worked on it. Everyone has a articulation of what empathy is, how to get there at each developmental level. So it's really important. Otherwise, we're all over the place. And so this unifies and makes consistent the athletes. It's a quality check against our own work.
And I think the other great example is what you guys just saw at Bertrand. So the math program. That has come in has also made this kind of shift where you're teaching kids why they're doing what they're doing, not just plug and chug. So yeah, it does take more time. They may not get quite as far with math as they did in those earlier grades, but. The type of understanding, the number sense that you saw developing by second grade. Pays off massive dividends in middle school and high school because those kids are coming in with thinking skills they've never had before.
Which is not necessarily a portrait of a graduate thing.
No, but it's it's.
Always the same idea of going more deeply into certain things rather than, you know, so such a. Broad but less, you know, intricate looks.
I just want to say thank you again for the presentation, my second time through it as well.
Can you stay awake? Thank you.
Thanks for the pressure. No, but it it's a great presentation. It's so interesting and like, I think, you know, Bill and I said. That we had no idea what went into this, you know, which is almost, you know, you think we should know that. But the amount of, the amount of data and just how broad this is, is 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 amazing. I, you know, I I love that one chart that you show where. You know, pre-K to one, it shows that they're, you know, I'm aware of my body and my feelings, but then you show fourth to fifth and I'm mindful of words and actions and impacts on others and I. Notice other people's feelings, you know, it, when you see it spelled out like that, you really understand, you know, the growth that needs to happen. And then, you know, when we talk about bringing all of these things together. I, there was something that we looked at in curriculum. I don't remember. It was one of them in the charts we thought of. You know, I I'm not going to get it exactly right, but there was something, say it was biology, but like. You know, learning about, per se, cloning, but also having the conversation about the ethics of it. Which is really informative. So it's not just, you know, touchy-feely, like, are you feeling okay today? We need adults that are going to enter into businesses that are going to do smart academic things. But also consider the ethical implications and then anybody who wants Oppenheimer, like, it wasn't just about, like, should we build a bomb or can we build a bomb? Should we build a bomb, you know? So we we deal with these things every day as an adult and in every single business, you know, at the tradesman, everything is dealing with. Well, and how to do something and what should be done, right? So. I think that this is a great way of really encompassing all of those things and showing how it progresses, you know, from pre-K all the way up to graduation. But I did want to say, since we did have two students that stuck around for this presentation. What do you guys think of it? I mean, did you have any idea that this is everything that went into Portrait of a Graduate and. You know, like Mr. Root pointed out, you're juniors, you're working on your nest. I know from home, how fun that is. You know, what are, do you have any thoughts that you'd be willing to share?
Yeah, I have two thoughts. So once I've been asked it, right? One, I really like this, especially for the undergrads. I think it's like really, really impactful to learn all this, especially, you know, B G P. B G P, T I S, just like learning all that at such a young age and being able to grow with it. As a freshman at the high school, I think it's still important, but I think that it's really important to be mindful of like the language. Or like the way we go around using it, because like I know from experience, I know from seeing my classmates, from seeing my friends. If like we, if it's presented to us as something kind of like elementary or if it's like, we're gonna talk about our feelings today. Everyone's done, everyone's done. Or like, you know, we'll do the wheelchair thing. And like, I'm sure it helps people. I'm sure it's like a good thing. Obviously, it's proven to do wonders for a lot of people. But in, we do it in our ego blocks. A lot of it's just like, I feel tired. I feel bored. So I think that finding ways to go around it while seeming more kind of mature for a high school audience would be. Really beneficial and still communicate the same idea. And then the nest. So I understand why we did the nest. I understand the meaning behind the nest. I don't know if it exactly accomplishes what it's trying to accomplish. I think that if it did, it would be, you know, a godsend. It would be perfect. But I think that a lot of people just see it as busy work and I'm going to be completely honest, you've been a lot of our guys who see it as busy work. And I also know a lot of people. That because it's not like a state thing anymore, they're kind of just waiting until it gets canceled. And no one's really doing anything, doing anything with it. And I feel like it's just. Another piece of work, especially, you know, a lot of it's loaded up the senior year. Very few people are past the artifact that they need to have at this point. Senior year is already very stressful. You're going into college. I feel like the last thing that a lot of people want to do. Is scroll back like three years ago through their docs and see what essays they wrote. And then having to write a reflection on it where you just click the same few things. And or like try and find a teacher comment on it. So I feel like something that would just be a lot more beneficial and maybe still like a communicate the same idea. Is just on some of the bigger projects, just have kids write a reflection after they do this project. You can use the same exact reflection. It'll be current, they'll have it in their minds. It's a one and done and. You're gonna be the most popular guy in town if you get rid of this. So that's just how I feel about it. It's obviously a lot more nuanced than that, a lot more complicated, like doing the whole thing. But I think that the nest as a whole, event, doing everything that it like should be.
And Mr. Poland, I know he's, he has a group of students that he's working with to evolve the nest.
For that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think they are, we're taking. May not be on that one, but you're on too many things, you guys pulled. Yeah, so I think, I think Mr. Poland is working with a group of students to evolve the nest. The nest comes as an artifact from one of the things the state used to require. Which is really, for all intents and purposes, kind of a portfolio of work that's done. So now they're looking at how to evolve that. And so your feedback is really important, both of it appears. And I think that I'm hearing similar feedback from the young adults that Mr. Poland is working with. So I know Mr. Poland is kind of pivoting, looking at how to, you know, to make that something more meaningful for the students themselves to that open.
Yeah.
So I know we're considering that work.
And it was very much a sort of retrofitted into what we have available at the moment because we have the state requirement we have to get done, blah, blah, blah. So now we have a little freedom to make it actually meaningful. Your whole thing about. Doing it right at the moment that the project is done is exactly what should happen. It should be embedded in the classes, not just advisory log, eagle log. So you seriously need to get it.
One of the things that we didn't really bring back around, and it's awesome, obviously, to have the the young adults, the clients really give us the feedback. But another group that cares about this a lot are the N E S and C evaluation group. And when they came in and they renewed it, one of the, one of the major strong points for our district. And our supervisors, administrators, our teachers, everybody did a great job with students. Is are things like the portrait of a graduate. And I think due to this work, I think we're we have done a really great job of presenting ourselves to the N E S committee. They're going to come back with recommendations because they always do, but it was something that I heard again and again as feedback from this group that. They they were amazed by how much work and how. Again, it's 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 been a great thing for that to.
And talking about how thoughtful the program is. I mean, for you to think about, you know, starting with the dispositions down in the younger grades and starting with the skills at the older grades, that's a really thoughtful. Way to do it and I think that proven very successful, so.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I mean, our goal is very much to not make it a thing on the shelf that looks pretty. Because I was severe right off the bat that that's what it would be. And so that was one of the things that me I said, it doesn't feel like that at all. It is very much alive and and developing, so. We see it there, did you?
Yeah, I just wanted to pick off, hang back off of what you said, like, because it was so new when we started doing it, we started doing our freshman year. Most of our eagle block teachers didn't really know what it was either. So how were we supposed to understand what we needed to do? And even though we had specific times to work on it, I worked on it every time. That we had that eagle block come up and I'm still not caught up with it. And going back into trying to find older documents because. But it's really, really hard because. Most of our teachers, once their class is done, the Google classroom is deleted. So you can't even go back. So once you're done with that class. It's 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 really hard to find documents and go back into it and. It's just hard to keep up with and.
The logistics and stuff like that too is here. We can make sure that before you leave a class and have less access to what was in there. You get what you want out of there, so to speak. That's huge. It shouldn't be difficult for you. It's supposed to be. Part of what you do and go look at what I've done. It shouldn't be this stressful, difficult thing here. Freaking out over for new degrees and like, frankly, she's on your program.
Dan? Oh, yeah. Sorry, it's been a minute. So as for, this is my first time here and it obviously like a great body of work. It's absolutely. Needed from just like the thought process that you went through with absolutely everything. The world's completely changing. Completely agree with that. It's gotta be. Really difficult for a twenty, thirty-year teacher to implement these changes at the high school level, given that Andrew for sure. So. Yeah, I get that it's a big effort. But like a couple of questions as far as like, what was the genesis of it back in twenty nineteen? What caused for this major shift? Who's calling for all of this? It sounds like maybe any A S C, but. Kind of how does that tie into as well? Like, I'm a product, for sure, of memorize it, pass it and then graduate with honors or something along those lines, but like. If there isn't kind of a call at higher education levels and even like the collegiate levels to teach teachers this type of a new program. So the teachers funnel into the school systems. Or like, how are our students making sure that they're still passing whatever the required courses are to come out with those high honors at whatever point? Because like, with this in the mindset at college. Hopefully, starting at K two all the way up to twelve, you're going to be having all of the background knowledge to pass these exams, but. You can graduate with honors by studying it, regaining it, like coming out with honors and you get a job by doing that. So like, does all of this, like, which I believe is the absolute correct way to go, does it still like tie in? Obviously, the focal point for college right now, probably still scores.
Every one of those pillars is actually representing an area of research that said it was important for. Young adults and human beings in general to develop in order to be successful in life. And so what it is, is an evolution of how your public schools work. Because when you go back to my time in public schools, things were quite different. You know, I grew up in public schools in California. You know, I, they they didn't, the growth mindset was not a concept. If I failed in a a test at fifty-five in middle school, that was okay. I mean, it was, you shouldn't have done that. And I was like. I don't care about French. And so it didn't really matter that I got a fifty-five to me because it wasn't connected to anything. You know, certainly wasn't learning growth mindset. And so it's about evolving how we do this so that it helps the young adults. Um, and so it's about evolving how we do this so that it helps the young adults recognize the, um, the skill sets that they need to have for success in the world and actually teaching to those. Because if we don't know what we're teaching, we don't know what our target is, we don't know what the destination is, we'll never get there. If we're not teaching kids growth mindset, by the way, Dweck would be one of the, you know, researchers, a lot of work from Dweck on growth mindset. Duxworth, but there's a little different angle on that. And, uh, you know, these are, these are research-based things, um, from years and years of research where school systems have finally evolved to the point where we say, if you're really going to succeed in math, you, you, we have to help kids not feel defeated the first time they can't answer the question as easily as they could in the grade before. They have to have the resilience and the growth mindset to say, you know what, it's okay. If they get a sixty-five, it's not about you got a sixty-five, it's about the, you know, the thirty-five percent of content that you did not know. Oh, you know, I need to understand that thirty-five percent of content to be able to be successful at the next level. So, you know, you don't want the sixty-five, which it's not the number as, as, you know, it has some importance, but it's the, the fact that you didn't know it. Because when you get to college, if you don't have or get into workforce and other things, if you don't have that growth mindset, if you don't have that resilience, you're gonna fail. So it's about helping public schools evolve and actually create, you know, graduates that are coming out that can effectively communicate with each other and don't alienate each other when they do it and manage their own emotions really well. Hey, I'm not feeling great today. I'm gonna maybe move that meeting back to eleven o'clock because I gotta get some time to gather myself. Because if I go into that meeting now, I'm gonna blow that meeting up. You know, these are things that you have to actually teach human beings at a young level so they come out capable. So it's an evolution of how to do that. Um, it's, it's important and it's based in a lot of research, so.
Yeah, actually, if you could go back to slide four.
Yeah.
Um, I'll just sort of go throw it back to that. So this is, um, very much supported nationwide, um, through just about every group you could think of. Um, you know, so we used, you're in the other slideshow.
Yeah.
You want that second tab there? Um, but so to that end, you were asking about higher ed, uh, and there have been shifts towards this kind of thinking. Um, I will say it's for higher ed, it's a work in progress. You know, I think, I just know in UConn, for example, I think bio is farther along that mentality than chemistry is. Chemistry is very traditional. I can always have that, unfortunately. Um, but yeah, there's definitely a push for that. I said the biggest push though is what you heard as we were talking to Senator Gordon earlier about the workforce piece. Um, if you go back to any employer, I can teach you how to use the machine. I can teach you, you know, the discrete skills of the job that I need you for. I can't teach you how to push through a problem. I can't teach you to problem solve when that machine breaks and you can figure out how to, you know, do it or maybe come up with a way to do it better, faster and, and, you know, with, with, uh, less materials or something like that. Those are the pieces that they want. Um, and they don't find a lot of that in employees that are coming in their way right now. So they're screaming for it, quite frankly. It's the, the original slideshow.
Yeah.
You know, that's tied with all those groups, right? So it is, it really comes from every major group that you can think of. Um, but I would say workforce is probably the biggest push for that right now, um, in terms of, of really making that, that scream for any.
Sounds great.
Thinking people, not just, you know, plug and chuck. Thing about manufacturing is it used to be literally like assembly line, right? I sat there all day, did the same thing over and over again. While there's a few jobs left like that, it's not like that anymore. Um, it is very much about like, I, I don't necessarily do the same job all the time. I may move around the floor. Uh, I am working with a, a program, you know, and I have to understand how that program works. Because when it doesn't work, I need to know what I have to fix in that program to get it to work right again. Um, that's not what it used to be. Uh, we didn't teach people to think back in the factory days because we just wanted them to put the sprocket in the, you know, thing, like whatever. Um, it's very different. That's, that's the slider second. So it really does. It's not just N E S, it's not just, uh, higher ed even. It's, it's nationwide. All the research that's being done is saying that this is what we need to be going after because of what you have to deal with in the world these days.
First of all, I was impressed you knew exactly where sliding around.
Oh, sorry, I should have cut it back on that.
Uh, no, thank you for taking the time to do this. This is, this is the, the fun stuff as a board of ed member is having your com or ask going to the rounds and, um, that. And, you know, this is just connecting more dots with, for me at least personally. Um, when you were talking about all this, when you're talking about the pillars, talking about the skills and dispositions, it brought me back to when we did the rounds at, and I just pulled up the, the agenda when we were at the middle school. It was a social emotional learning and culture and climate. And then how getting all those students in those young, those young middle school in the most awkward times of their lives, right? Going through such a massive change. You know, with everything, um, getting them in the mindset to get into that classroom and absorb the content and be all different learners to go ahead and proceed. But that entire school was unified in their vision and their conversation. That every student that fall away had that same communication, that same, you know, conversation. And so when they were able to go into their respective classrooms, they were able to absorb their content and become strong learners. And then you talked about BGP and the mathematics. And although, you know, like you talk about, why did I learn how to carry the one? Well, I don't know, they told me carry one. Right? Now I can hear why it is because it's, well, I mean, I know it's like it's the tens and it's the hundreds and blah, blah. But listening to these kids and these, these students talk about why it's the hundred and having, like I said, it was the hundred eighty, twenty thing. And you heard three different groups figure it out in a whole different, in a different way. But that's just the baseline to get to where our young adults are. And I appreciate your candor and, on how we need to, how not we. It needs, it should be revamped for our young adults and those ones that are going, getting ready to go to college and how that looks because it is, it's doing such a great job. I mean, I, it was easily, I was easily able to connect all the dots through all the presentations that we've had, through all the rounds and seeing this. It really just makes that entire. It's not just going to your class. And I'm a proud graduate of a California public school education myself. And it was, my math class had nothing to do with my science class. My history class had nothing to do with my English class. But I, but this, they all kind of intertwine in some capacity or that. And when I liked at the TMS middle, at the middle school, you have different educators working together with that R C L. So that the, the same vision is getting intertwined in those different subjects. So not only are you just teaching, you're teaching, you're teaching the subject, but you're teaching the culture. You, you know, and this is what I'm getting and I love it. I think it's fantastic. I'm proud parent of a student that got a growth mindset award in January. And I, and you went, the way you're talking about it, yeah, he was struggling. He wasn't doing his I X L. He wasn't highest on the class or in the reflex and different things. He was challenged by his educator. He moved up the top five. And then it, you know, but, but he, the way that, you know, Mr. Slaton and the teachers challenged him to get there, I saw him excited about something that he wasn't excited about before. You know, and so you're getting wheels turning on students that maybe their wheels weren't turning for certain things. So I'm so appreciative and I'm thankful for this presentation. This is fantastic. This has been what, six, seven years, you said, of like a hard day in work. And, um, obviously, and I, I appreciate the, the conversations that we're having with Mr. Poland and, and such to revamp it for, for all of our students. Because if there is, if we're roiling something out and there's an opportunity for improvement, we should do it. And it's, um, but I, I think this is absolutely phenomenal. I thank you for all your work that you're doing and, um, Dr. Willard, I thank you for connecting the dots for this California public school student. But it was, it really is fantastic because you see what our educators are excited to do for our students. And what we're doing for them.
Slightly different way of thinking too. So on the fifty-five example I gave you, in middle school, when I got a fifty-five, there was no motivation for me to do anything different. But if you do something like require a reassessment, if the student has to do a reassessment, if they get below a seventy or something like that, they may not be super motivated to go back and do it. But if they have to do it over time, having to do that again and again, they may decide, you know what, I'm just gonna do the extra studying so I don't have to be held after to keep doing these reassessments that are mandatory. Because an average middle school child will not be motivated to do something beyond the fifty-five unless, unless it inconveniences them in some other way. And so without that, they'll take the fifty-five, not understand the rest, and it'll hurt them later down the line. But if you find ways of pivoting into that motivation mindset of how they're, you know, how they think about it, then sometimes you can help them, you know, learn more and get skills on them. So it's just about thinking of a new way and new ways of doing it and being, you know, sometimes people say, well, if you're reassessing, you know, they, they just get another chance and they should have had that done the first time the right way. And that's not how a middle school kid thinks. You can say, you should have done that. And they'll be like, you know, so, you know, you need to have other ways of thinking about how they're going to be motivated to, to engage. And so it's just part of that too.
Right, just real quick, I know where you're putting it on. Um, yeah, I mentioned something about things not being, being able to, what's the, the Google classroom, that you can't see stuff in the past. Is there a reason why that's not with all the technology exists in this world? If I'm in tenth grade and I want to see something back from fourth grade, there's not an archive somewhere that I can pull up or?
No, it is there. What I, what I will say is when it's not, they're used to seeing it through the classroom. So that's why they're used to going and finding stuff.
Yes.
To just go into your drive, if you haven't set up any kind of organization in your drive, you've got to remember remotely what the heck you called it four years ago to try to search for it and find it. Um, so it's just a much more difficult task. It's there.
It's there.
Just a lot more difficult to find it when they're used to finding it right. They go to their socialized classroom. I know that was in November. Like, it's just easier to find.
Yeah, no, I understand.
It's there. They don't lose access.
No, everything is there. It's just like, like, I don't even go into drive. I just, I sit very far away from my drive. So.
Their capabilities. I was just curious.
Yeah, absolutely. One of the things that we've talked about with some of the undergrads from time to time is teaching them how to kind of get their drive in order early before it really starts getting pounded with stuff in middle school and high school so that it's not this, you know, abyss of stuff that's hard to find anything in your brain. Right?
Thank you. Can I just do one more quick one? Um, I know this is, we had said this is kind of a research-based with all kinds of researchers from who knows where and from what. Is there like a timeframe that we're gonna reevaluate this? Say new research comes out or how does that go with the way that this has been put together moving forward, say, every, you know, three years, we're gonna have a review of the teachers, the board of ed, blah, blah, blah. Cause like, me and the board of ed, six years ago, this was created by board of ed members, you know, who maybe had different ideas and thoughts and teachers who have retired and administrators are no longer even in the district.
Well, those pillars are, um, they're somewhat timeless in that they have a lot of research behind them. But the purpose of a thing, a process like this is that it's a living document. It's a living process. It never ends. Portrait of a Graduate always continues to evolve. So there's the meetings that we're talking about right now that are going on. There, there are, um, there's a lot of effort being put in to constantly re-engaging with the stakeholders. Um, and so, and this is an extension.
Oh, no, it's wonderful. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not downplaying. I just was curious moving forward.
Yeah, it's bound to be a long going process.
Okay.
I'll also put two cents in at budget sign, but that's why you pay the coordinators, because that's what we do, quite frankly, is keep an eye on what's going on and, and make sure that what we're doing is at the forefront of the research that's going on and what's being said about education. So that's, we have the time and that position to sort of do that.
This couldn't happen without the supervisors. It's not something that, you know, you have to have the supervisors to do the backbone of education in any district. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Guaranteed based on, on what we have coming up, this won't be the last time we have questions, will you?
Thank you, ladies. They're walking out with you to talk.
All right, we have committee reports. Communication.
So we, um, sent out a that you now call a co-curricular. I'm an extracurricular guy. Survey. So we've sent out a district wide survey, Walt had mentioned it earlier, um, regarding different activities, clubs, uh, study sessions or things that anyone either in the community, school, district, parents, and even students themselves, we're pushing it out to all different avenues for feedback and they'll be out for the next couple of weeks. And then, um, we'll gather the data and then, uh, see where we go from there. So hopefully get some things moving. Obviously it was late in this school year, but hopefully the next school year, maybe try to drum up some interest in some of these activities, the students, uh, and everyone are interested in that. And then Jen has an update for PTO.
Uh, so Teptoe, um, Mileage Club started on the twenty-second at both Birch Grove and TIS. And they're still looking for volunteers to help at recess to punch cards for participants. Younger siblings are welcome to accompany parents. So link for the signup for that can be found on their Facebook page. They just had a successful fifth grade dance last weekend. They had a success. They just wrapped up another success with the I S book fair last week. Um, planning is underway for the spring social, which will be held on Friday, May tenth at Birch Grove, which will include the book fair, the ice cream social, the art show, class baskets and a dunk tank in the works again. And maybe an outdoor dance party. Um, the spring social class baskets, which I hope you know are the highlight of everything. Uh, information went out at the end of March to all the class parents to begin preparations and planning collecting for the class basket fundraiser. If anyone needs any help or advice on those, just let me know. Uh, stay tuned for information on the school supply fundraiser after April break. Um, Talon Spring Spirit Ware sale, um, of twenty-five percent off is going on until next Tuesday and it includes Nike dry fifties. Um, link to order can be found on Facebook and they are planning their May staff appreciation events. For the TMS PTO, same thing with the spirit ware, um, sale of twenty-five percent off. Um, just, there are things like Talon baseball shirts and sweatshirts for students who we have recently made those teams. Um, they had a successful event at Wooden Word Blooms, making flower arrangements. So thank you to everyone who participated in that. The butter braid pickup was today. So thanks to everyone who ordered and supported that fundraiser. They also just completed a successful Munson's fundraiser and they will soon be selling the eighth grade promotion lawn signs, um, in the spring before June. For boosters, registration for the second annual cornhole tournament will open soon. The, the tournament is on Saturday, May eighteenth. Graduation banners and lawn signs are on sale right now for fifty dollars. Orders are due by April thirtieth. The profits go towards boosters and project graduation. So instructions on how to order those are on their Facebook page as well. Um, and then boosters and project graduation held their first Eagle scramble planning meeting. The tournament is planned for September twenty-ninth this year. And then Talon Project Graduation, um, they held a successful bottle and can drive at the high school on the twenty-third, making a profit of three thousand two hundred and twenty-three dollars to go towards, um, graduation night. And then special mention to Talon Education Foundation. They had a very successful Harlem Wizard events last, Harlem Wizard event last Saturday at the high school. Um, and it was sold out. So it was a very profitable event. Um, thanks to Talon staff for participating and making this such a fun and successful event. And thanks to T E F for all they do to support our schools.
Hold on, before we move on, I just did want to say for your official Facebook page, please don't put the survey on there. We don't want, uh, spam coming in. Just so whoever receives it, either via email or text or in the student packets or, um, digital, I think, digital backpacks is the only way we want to communicate.
Understood.
All right, thank you.
F M C?
Yeah, so we met, um, March twentieth, but we already discussed, uh, budget, uh, at our last meeting, remains at a freeze, point zero four percent. Um, it's in our minutes in this meeting, so. Excuse me, I was gonna touch on the E R F fund transfer, uh, but that's in new business for today, so I won't take any time there. But Dr. Will added F F to our F M C of Birch Grove Primary School update. I'm not sure that was on the agenda this evening, but I, I saw good news today, uh, hopefully. But if you wanted to provide a little color there, it's kind of put up the floor to you. Based on today's news would be great.
Sure, um, we did have a, a meeting with, uh, the Director of Department of Administrative Services, Internal Audit Division. Um, he did say that, uh, they are going to be submitting upon our behalf, uh, a, um, a communication to the state legislature. Basically it's, uh, it's a statement that they believe that we should, uh, that Talon should be a main hall and that Talon should not be responsible for the difference in the space standard.
And not withstand.
Yeah, and they call it not, a notwithstanding letter, which I know nobody really knows what that means. It is legal terminology that basically says that, you know, notwithstanding the space standard, we, um, should not be penalized for having a space standard that was given to us by the state. You know, and that, that then should be waived because, uh, the state official did it. Um, and we had every expectation to think that that would be, um, you know, what was done. Uh, so they're, they're, they, I think they, they have to follow a certain audit process and we appreciate their, uh, their grace and their due diligence and their audit process. Uh, and they, they recognize though that we're in a weird spot and they're helping us with it, so.
We, uh, we met today, had a presentation from E L A. And, um, I think we all learned a very important fact from that presentation that science, wonderful subject, history, wonderful subject, math, wonderful subject. Nothing happens unless you know how to read.
Of course you say that as soon as you're reading.
So the importance of, you know, the, the, the reading. So the importance of, you know, the, the, the reading curriculum at the lower levels was, uh, explained in great detail. And while, um, while we are doing well, there's always room to improve.
Falcie?
We scheduled next week.
All right.
I wouldn't survive without John Paul.
Yeah, she's on.
All right, my report. A little bit longer novel, but still under four pages.
I heard that.
Okay, uh, while preparing to write my chair report for this week, I spent some reflective time with the district vision statement. To represent education at its best, preparing each student for an ever-changing society and becoming a full community of learning where excellence is achieved in each individual's success. There's so many jewels to unpack there. My intention is to actively focus on how our actions are guided by this statement. In this particular instance, I meditated on the phrase to become a full community of learning. Never is this more important than now, than during budget season. As the board and its representatives answer various questions concerning its budget proposal, both the public and the town council, I've heard it repeated that the town council has to look at the BOE budget as part of the amalgamated talent budget. Our vision statement agrees. Our target is to be a full community of learning. Mindful to the holistic benefits of education on a society, we strive to see education as a formative part of our community rather than a cost or a burden of it. It is simply part of the actions required to build a community. During an email conversation this week, one of our more vocal residents stated, quote, "I cannot support this budget, not because I don't support education, I most certainly do. It is because I just can't afford much more." There it is. It's not a question of town versus schools. It's a matter of negotiating priorities. We all enter this conversation with an intention to do best for our children, our neighbors in our town. We are not adversaries. We are in this together. Determining how to navigate that milestone is the responsibility of those that govern. While it's often convenient to say that the people voted in a majority and a minority, the reality is that they voted in nine individuals onto this Board of Education and seven individuals onto the town council. This particular mix of experience and talent is unlike any that have come before. We have a real opportunity to identify new and unique solutions. Please do not allow the conversations to fall back into the trite answers of old. Look at the data provided for yourself. Ask the questions you have laid upon you. Make your decisions and cast your votes. Upon us is the responsibility to find those new ways to figure out how to provide what is really needed for all our residents, old, young, and everyone in between. To provide for this, Jen and I have asked Dr. Willet to put together some additional data. The Board of Education budget proposal that was included in the town manager's proposed budget includes the anticipated reductions necessary to operate at that funding level. It also includes a general assumption that efforts to identify opportunities will continue throughout the fiscal year. They can't be promised or anticipated, but there must be a continued effort. We've asked Dr. Willet to provide data that shows what those effects will look like if that fiscal bar is moved up or down. Compromise is a necessary component of budgeting. Our intent with this ask is to ensure that the necessary upcoming decisions are transparently data-driven and mindful of what the line on these cases, whoever's that. Jen, did you want to say anything?
Uh, thanks, Tony. So like all of us, I'm sure I've spent a great deal of time over the last couple of weeks thinking about what the impacts to the district will be once we have a deliberation from our town council. We know thus far that the town manager has input our adopted budget into his proposed budget, but in such a way that significantly impacts no rate. As Tony explained, we are hopeful that given the town's current positive financial standing, they can be innovative as they come up with new solutions to have thriving departments without overburdening residents. I agree that we do not want to undergo the same narratives that have been brought forth year over year. It's a time for growth and change. Tony and I were asked directly in the March twentieth town council meeting by the chair if we believe our request is sufficient to meet program goals and objectives of our district for the next fiscal year. We both answered that we support the budget before and we believe that this is a necessary start. As we all discussed in our budget meetings, we understand that our ship has not been rising with the tide over the last eleven years. And we know honoring this year's request is necessary to get to a place of stability. We were all unified that a multi-year plan would properly communicate our goal to right our ship and that what is best for our students and our community is to be on a stable course. In preparation for our discussion tonight on our board goals, one stood out. Engage in a transparent, robust, and responsible budget process that maximizes innovation and efficiency, supports student growth, and is well communicated to the community. We had some differing ideas on what was responsible regarding as our role as BOE members versus town council members and how we factor district needs into overall town budgeting. However, I believe we passed on a robust compromise to the town council between the two. We need to ensure now that data is communicated to our district community, staff, students, and parents, in a way that they can understand. We all know that even as board members, following all this information can be daunting. In addition to that, there's a lot of social media banter where facts and data are being mixed with bias and misrepresentation. It's tough not to engage, but my aim is always to provide data responsibly. When it comes to our children and our finances, we all understandably have very personal opinions and I want to respect that. Now we must wait while the town council goes through their process, which isn't an easy thing to do. In attending the recent meetings, Tony, Dr. Willard, and I are aware that there could be some very large district impacts. We need to ensure communication to our school community throughout this entire process, which is why we've asked Dr. Willard to compile and communicate the data that Tony discussed.
All right, let's move on then.
Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Willet, item K one, food scraps program update.
All right, so this is just in response, uh, it came up in the last meeting. And generally when things come up, whether traffic pattern or, or something about food, you know, I try to, um, at least get some answer to you so you have a sense of the why behind the, you know, the why in the process. Um, so this will be another example. This came up in the last board of ed meeting. I wanted to report back to the board on some of the why. Um, so when I went back and talked to our food service program staff, uh, it said that there's not excessive stra, I'm sorry, there is not excessive food scraps at the end of the day because the staff have a very good management from a financial point of view, how many they, they, they make. They do their lunches based on what they, you know, know there's going to be usage of the lunches. Kids throw away stuff they don't want to eat. But, um, they, they do that by a certain formula so that they don't have a lot of leftover food generally. So they're not throwing away tons of food. The kids will throw away, you know, the apple they don't want, um, sometimes, but um, but they do have a very good way of calculating how many are going to be needed in a day, um, and have a lot of good math that's gonna help them do that. Um, some of the leftover items can be saved and reused for the next day. Um, and they do that. Uh, sometimes if they can freeze things, they'll do that. We have very large freezers and they'll freeze stuff that wasn't used for future use. Um, since the fresh fruit and vegetables can be used for more than one to two days, they never waste those items. They always roll those into something else that they're making. There is, uh, a lot of risk with donating food items that have already been cooked or remained cool for too long. So I know sometimes people feel like, you know, just donate them, but there are food standards about how long something can sit. Um, and so they have to follow those USDA and food standards and they don't want to ever take the risk of people getting sick. Um, they follow these very strict guidelines from the FDA's food, food code. Um, about how long certain foods can sit at a certain temperature, how quickly it needs to be cooled, um, if being reused. How long that food remains good to eat. So it's not quite as easy as there's a leftover, you know, apple, what we do, it's more they have to follow those standards. Um, and so, um, that's why they, they, they are careful about what they do. They have donated perishable items to the FRC, so we do reuse. If you have milk, they'll give it to the family, uh, resource center, milk and yogurt. Um, and they also do some, there's a composting program that they, you know, that they can give to, but they, they'll continue to research other ways of using it. So there's not a lot left because we'll bring home certain things like food. They do have a standard they have to follow for whether they can reuse it or not. You get raisins and oranges. You're gonna get a lot of stuff probably with it, you know, but again, that's part of, that's actually part of their effort to make sure that, you know, those healthy foods are being brought up. And it's, uh, there's a lot of effort being to purchase locally sourced to. Uh, so there's, there's a lot of effort in what they're.
Any question? All right, thank you, Dr. Willet. Moving on to item L two, ERF fund.
So, um, you probably heard me talk before about ordinance, uh, number eighty-six, chapter eight, section eight, two. Basically, other than reading the whole thing to you, um, at the end of the year, uh, the board can transfer up to one percent under the educational reserve fund, uh, language of, uh, of our district. It's also allowed by that statute. Um, it's listed, I think it's two eighty-six. And so we, at the end of last year, had a balance of one seventy-two five. And we, at the third quarter of this financial year, are able to make a request to the town council to have that rolled into our educational reserve funding. And so if we can do that, um, you know, it'll, it'll have a balance of three hundred zone there. So this is something we do typically every, every year at this time, and it's presented to the board uh, with a, with a language to use. And if we're able to do that tonight, then I can hand it over so Lisa Hancock literally tomorrow and she'll begin the process of bringing it to the council so that those funds can be transferred.
Jen, did you want to add anything to?
No, just make a motion to move it to action.
Sure. Any discussion to move this to board action? All right. Brian?
Hi.
Dan?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
All right, Jen?
Hi.
Dana?
Hi.
Jaden?
Hi.
Katie?
Hi.
All right, Dr. Willet, let's move that to board action, item N three.
All right, moving on. You know, um, board es- education goals discussion, in the interest of time, let me ask this question first. Hopefully everybody has had a chance to review the, the goals and the, um, the measurables and the items that were attached. Uh, are we ready to vote to approve those?
I am.
Would there be any, uh, any dissension against doing the movement? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to move that to board action.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Brian?
Hi.
Dan?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Dana? Jaden?
Hi.
Katie?
Hi.
Dr. Willet, let's make that board action N four. Okay, yeah. All right, Dr. Willet, board action N one, consideration of canceling April tenth, twenty twenty-four meeting.
So as you may or may not have realized, April tenth is smack in the middle of, um, spring break. Which, uh, I might have mentioned a few months ago when we were flying over the, the overall calendar. Um, but it, uh, it is generally, um, along the pattern that we follow of the second and, you know, fourth. So this one is, just happens to fall here. Uh, you can keep it or you can cancel it. You can ask me to move it, but the problem with moving it is it usually backs up against something else already happening that's not. Um, so, you know, we try to move it to another date. A lot of venues are, like, this room is taken and we have to find another place for it and things like that. So you just have to decide if you have enough business or if you want a break for that.
I'd, I'd like to make a motion.
No, I'm not making a motion. I actually have a question. So I, I'm not, I'm not opposed to canceling the meeting, but my, my concern is with this possible budget issue coming, how does that play in whether we have to rework some figures around to the referendum and the timeline of the town and all that kind of stuff? Or will you just immediately snap a finger and call a special meeting?
That's it. Yeah, and, and that's, that's something we can, we can always do, especially when it comes to very clear topics such as this. Like, if the need does arise, a special meeting can and will be set.
Okay, all right.
But I believe we also, we have time because we have another meeting at, what, the end of the month, twenty-fourth.
And then the first, they'll be a referendum. Yeah, it depends on if they make an adjustment, then I would be coming to you with recommendations about what that would look like. You already have some of the scenarios on the crosswalk we talked about. So if there's an adjustment that is a certain level of, um, reduction, those scenarios come alive again.
And we have an FFC before the twice.
Yeah, it's on the seventeenth.
Right.
Um.
So we can have conversation and.
So would you still be in the meeting? Uh, it's on the seventeenth, we would have the meeting. It would just be great if we can move up the, if I'm, if I'm not doing anything April tenth. That's our planning meeting, so if we can do that a week prior, potentially, so. If I have, I like to keep all my stuff on one day.
I'd like to make a motion to cancel the April tenth, two thousand and four, for that meeting.
Second. Any discussion? All right, let's vote. Brian?
Hi.
Dan?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
I have a name. Jen?
Hi.
Dana?
Hi.
Jaden?
Hi.
Katie?
Hi.
Dr. Willet, meeting is canceled.
I thought you were just gonna ask his first vote.
I think we know. Okay, moving on, board action N two, educator diversity plan.
So as you may recall, we did look at this, um, the last meeting. It is required by the state of Connecticut. It's on the dashboard. Um, you know, this is just the second review of the diversity plan. It does help us, gives us an direction, uh, it's an important decision for our hiring processes. And again, it is required as part of one of the things the state has us to now. So the staff did this, uh, the team did it together. We recruited from those on the staff that wanted to be a part of it. It's generated by them. Um, and it is ready to go as soon as you approve it, we would be sending this to the state.
Any discussion?
Again, we don't have an option, do we?
We don't have an option to not.
You could, you could direct me now to, but they'll probably come knocking on our door at some point.
I mean, it's mandated, but.
It's mandated. You have to have it.
But you do have an option to approve or?
Sure.
Yeah, yes.
I want to take the motion. So move. Second? Second. Discussion. All right, Brian?
Hi.
Dan?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
All right, Jen?
Hi.
Dana?
Hi.
Jaden?
Hi.
Katie?
Hi.
Dr. Willet, that one passes. All right, board action N three, the ERF fund.
Yeah, I would say that's, uh, are you supposed to say discussion first or?
No, you go.
I would absolutely, um, say that's our money. Let's, uh, certainly move forward with that. And then i- in addition for future discussion, I would say it'd be great to have a conversation about even increasing that one percent. If that's something, uh, we're able to do. But for now, I would absolutely, uh, motion that the Talon Board of Education pursuant to ordinance eighty-six, chapter eight hereby makes the request that the town council transfer one hundred and seventy-two thousand five hundred of the BOE audited balance of June thirty, twenty twenty-three into the educational reserve fund.
Wait a second.
Second.
Discussion. All right, Brian?
Hi.
Dan?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
All right, Jen?
Hi.
Dana?
Hi.
Jaden?
Hi.
Katie?
Hi.
Motion passes. All right, item board action N four. Approval of board goals. Any discussion? I'll entertain a motion. So move. Second?
Second.
Any discuss? Brian.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
And I, Jen.
Hi.
Dana.
Hi.
Jaden.
Hi.
Katie.
Hi.
We have goals. No need to fill out. All right. Dr. Will, uh, thank you and everybody here for your work, uh, in these goals. Public participation. Comments must be limited to items on the agenda. Uh, anybody in the room or on the phone would like to speak, please raise your hand. All right, so you're not online and none in the room. We will close that. Points of information, if anyone from the board would like to speak.
I have something. Shocker, I know. So. All right, I'll do it. I'll make sure I'm quick this time, I promise. So I typed up something a little bit. I just want to say that. I know that we, I'm really proud of the work that we all did crafting our budget. I know that we all came from very different points of view. We came from different perspectives, different tenure on the board. Kids, different ages, no kids, all that. Um, and I, I just truly appreciate the robust conversation. Um, this is probably one of the most difficult parts of being a board of education member. Uh, I'm truly hopeful that we can come through this on the other side, doing the right thing for our students and our staff and town and public school. Um, I'm hopeful that our town council, um, utilizes the opportunity for some of the, um. Some of the, the funds that we have in town and utilize those for, for opportunities to not increase the no rate and not impact. Some of our townspeople's wallets, um, when it comes to increasing taxes and increase in no rate, no rate. Um, again, is, is my job as a board of education member to focus on what's needed for our students and our staff and our educators. Um, with that, I did some digging and some, on some opportunities that our town has, and I'm hoping that our, our town is educating. We're working on communications level with the, with the community of town public schools. I think it's paramount that we educate our community on what other resources are available. To, uh, other folks within the community, um, like the senior center, um, so folks on, um, fixed incomes. There's ordinance. Ordinance sixty for tax relief. To help those folks who are on fixed incomes and for folks who are, have limited resources. So there is a window, um, to apply for that. I believe it's coming up quickly this year. Um, we go right on the town back center, under the town website to sign up for that. Um, the town, town website to sign up for that. But there are other relief funds in town to help our folks that we're very concerned about. Um, helping. So I think we also need to talk about, and this is said by a very wise person that's heavily involved in the town and has been here for many years and. Has had their, their kids going through the school system is we are the town of talent. We're not board of ed versus town. We're not, we are the town of talent and we are one. Division or one department within that board. So lose, I hate the rhetoric of board versus town. And I'm really excited about the work that we're doing as a board of education. And I think that we're, um, being a good role model to the community about what diverse opinions can do to work together to do what's right by the team. So I'm just hoping that we can continue that communication and continue some resources with the town council to help the folks. Of all of town. I guess that's the best way I can say.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I might as well stick you back. So, um, yeah, after reflection, I know, uh, the four or five of us were there. Jane was there the other night for the town council meeting for the board of ed, um. Review of, uh, the budget for the townwide presentation. Um, yeah, I, I echo what Dana was saying that it, that I. Very much felt that there was combativeness towards the board of education's budget. And not just being acted as a regular, another department. Like they did the solid waste, but I didn't hear any single one person's complaint that they're spending twenty thousand dollars. On bulky pickup, when these people can just pay the thirty bucks or forty bucks it is for the select few people in town. That can go ahead and pay if they have a couch they want to get rid of and put the twenty thousand dollars, whether it's towards a senior's education or. Fixing a park or whatever. It just seems that there's other things that people are just very blinded by. And then like Jen, I don't comment on social media, but I see all the negative. In-informed people, a lot of them don't have the data, don't take the time to even email the board looking for certain facts or. Go into the pack that Dr. Will put together. It's very disheartening in that realm of the process as a new. Board of education member and seeing it from this side is just, it is just, I was kind of talking the talk, but it's just expressing my. Views of the process so far. So I hope that there are some happenings that, you know, can make this work. Because as coming from the curriculum committee meeting, like the birth of the reading, the, the language lady. Um, just really representative that I'll heart back to the five meetings that I expressed for the reading for the birch crew. The need is there today, not in a year or two. It's there still today, even with this budget, it's gonna be shortchanged. So. I'll leave it at that.
Well, Stephanie.
Thank you. Any video? So just got two real quick. One, again, and trying to what, what Brian was saying there. You know, the town council meeting, uh, the wizard event the other day. You know, I wanted to thank everybody that, that's everybody here on the board that, that's shown up, you're here virtually to support that. I, I think we are doing an absolutely amazing job of showing our unit. You know, the, the, the meeting we sat together, we discussed, and the, the wizards and sat and had a good time. People look. They don't see the, the fighting or the, the arguing. They see community members that are trying to work together, and I think that, that shows a really good image, um, that will pay off in the long run. The second one, uh, is, is again, going back to that. Um, full community of learning. That, that our vision says, and then chiming in on our goals here. You know, at, at some point in the relatively near future, hopefully for the best, we are going to get room this budget. And we are going to transition then into just the, the status of governing. And while a lot of it will be dictated, you know, the state has us do stuff, Dr. Will, it will need some direction on stuff. There is opportunity for the passions that we have. You know, each of you, when you ran, sat and talked to your, your significant others, your loved ones about if I only had the chance to do dot, dot, dot. So I want to hear those. Um, now, while we have the opportunity, if you could, you know, email it to myself, to Dr. Will, or to Jen, so that, uh, or sorry, to Bill. So as we're sitting in these agenda planning meetings and we're looking forward, we should try to insert those, try to get some traction under those things that you truly care about. That being said, we'll entertain, oh, sorry, uh, future, Dr. Will.
I do want to highlight that, uh, you know, we talked about the ELA English Language Arts, some of the things today we saw our presentation on in curriculum. We have a great opportunity to see that in action, structured word inquiry program. That is one of our instructional rounds. And so that is coming up, um, on, uh, April fifth next week. And it's nine thirty to twelve thirty. Uh, it'd be great. It's at Tom and intermediate school. Uh, for those of you who have signed up, you're gonna get the, uh, the, um. Agenda soon, but if you, if some of you haven't, it would be a great thing to see ELA in action if you want to.
All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Second. Discussion. Brian.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
All right, Jen.
Hi.
Dana.
Hi.
Jaden.
Hi.
Katie.
Hi.
All right, thank you, everybody. You have a wonderful evening.